It's the 10 o'clock hour, we're gonna go ahead and open the meeting. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessments and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at that assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. And Gresham County Council, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone.
Okay, are there any new employees to be introduced? Okay, seeing no new employees, we'll go on. Can council any reportable actions for closed session?
No reportable actions today.
Okay. Okay, at this point, are there any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time? In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, Chair Sullivan, I'd like to pull out for discussion items three, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Okay, those items will be pulled. Any other corrections or additions? Okay. So, at this point, we are now going to listen to brief reports and announcements from board members related to programs, projects, travels, and committees. Supervisor Gitlin, would you like to start?
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. Well, after the July ninth meeting, I met with Sutter CEO Linda Horn, and we discussed Sutter Coast's future. I scratched my head because I regret to tell you, I was not pleased with the meeting. I felt that Ms. Horn was, I'll use a word, obfuscating. Heard that word recently, which is not being completely open and honest with the full intention of what the hospital wants to do in our community. And I asked her about this, and she, her answers were less than forthright to me. So, I gently reminded, Ms. Horn is a very nice lady and very charming, you know, your stay here is limited. You're gonna be here sixteen months, and what you and the Camden Study will do will affect this community for generations. So, she acknowledged what I said, and, but we didn't really seem to have much common ground to speak on. I reminded her of our remote kind of status here, that we're not just another hospital. We have very challenging roads to get in and out of here, last chance grade is always a problem. And we really need a state-of-the-art hospital there, and I hope she'd consider that seriously. But, as you know, the money is where you go. People follow the money, and it always comes down to this. So, this move toward regionalization, which is another way of saying outside management, so everybody understands that the word regionalization means your decisions for this hospital will be made, not in Del Norte County, but in the Bay Area, is very much on the table and will happen. And the other alternative is this devolving into a new status of what's called critical access. In a short word, the word critical will render this community critical if we move toward critical access. It's just not good medical sense to put people on planes on a regular practice and ferry them out to different places. So, I'm sorry to say, we don't have a common ground. It's a two billion dollar corporation, the Sutter Health Network, which enjoys, much to my amazement, nonprofit status, so that's something we're gonna look into also. Also want to announce some good news for me. I've been appointed by good friend, Assemblymember Tim Donnelly, longtime friend Tim Donnelly, and he's running for governor of California. I'll be his Del Norte County chairperson, and Tim will be coming to Del Norte County Saturday, September fourteenth, and we'll look forward to hosting him and Republican State Chair Jim Brulte up in Del Norte County next month. Take a bite out of a bite program cleaned up another home, latest effort for our daily bread ministry volunteers was to remove overgrown brush and mow the lawn on a property in District Five on Waldo Street. We're also looking into assisting two separate property owners in District Two. Also want to let everybody know that the trespassing signs have been ordered and will be delivered by the end of this week. I'm to be posted at the county-owned property next to the Walmart. There's been a lot of discussion about some of the incorrect, what monies have been spent. I've heard the number twenty-one hundred dollars, I've heard the number eleven hundred dollars, that, these are all incorrect numbers. The total bill to put these signs up, direct cost which was not borne by Del Norte County was three hundred and twelve dollars and ninety cents, which has been paid for by Walmart. And thank you very much to the Del Norte Sheriff's Association for picking up the remainder of that. Not one dollar of government money was expended to clean up this horrific mess, and we want to thank Daily Bread Volunteers, the Boy Scout Troop Ten Seventy-Seven, Crescent City Del Norte Sheriff's Employees Association, Walmart Store Nineteen Ten, Code Enforcement Officer Dave Mason, Deputy Director of Planning Heidi Kuntzall. In my eyes, you're all exemplary, my hat's off to you. Also had the opportunity to ask you, if those of you who wish to contribute to our daily bread ministries, donations are graciously accepted and they'll be put to good work. Thank you. We have some very happy homeowners on Herald Street, I want to report to you today. Due to the very quick installation of four-way stop signs at Hoover and Coolidge, residents called me immediately after the signs were erected and how pleased they were that this slowed down the traffic considerably. I want to thank County Engineer Jim Barnes and Tina McClendon. Big thanks to Jeff Daniels and our Roads Department for his prompt attention to installing the signs, and all the neighbors coming down Herald Street who came to our meeting to express their concerns, they're very pleased today. Monday, August fourteenth, attended a special solid waste management meeting at the site. There were continued discussions on the future of the authority by all of the interested parties there. We'll be having some announcements at the end of the day when solid waste meets at the end of the day today for our once-a-month meeting. Supervisor Hemmingson and I also learned a little bit from Supervisor Hemmingson about the Rule Twenty. These are, this is a program, we met last week with Monty Mendenhall and Pac Power about this Rule Twenty program, which is the placement of utilities which are currently above ground and placing them underground. The county has at its disposal up to one point eight million dollars. It sounds like a lot of money, but unfortunately, it's just not gonna go very far when you're putting these utilities underground, so Supervisor Hemmingson and I concurred along with Mr. Mendenhall that we need more money to do the job in a right way and not do it in a halfway. So, and most of the impact would be in the city, so they don't have as much money, so we just have to be a little more patient and wait for that to happen. Last week, I was contacted by two owners, home homeowners in and around the four eighty-five K Street site. This is the site that is a home, three-bedroom home controlled by Department of Mental Health, and with some very perplexing complaints. I was hoping that this would not come into this, but apparently there is ongoing public urination, nudity, public intoxication at a block party, which is apparently not supervised properly. I communicated my concerns to Health and Human Services Director Gary Blatnick, and fortunately, I'm not here to get heard back on what measures will be implemented to make sure that the neighborhood is not directly impacted by this particular property home, this home here. I also attended a North Coast Air Quality meeting in Eureka last Thursday, very interesting meeting. An amicus brief was presented, and this is essentially an action by another air quality district down in San Luis Obispo County, which essentially condemns the use of ATVs on the sand dunes in Oceano. So, the amicus brief is going out to the other thirty-two AQMD districts to get on board and support. Now, the case has been determined, and the AQMD down in San Luis Obispo actually prevailed on this, much to my chagrin, that sand particles are actually pollutants. But then it's been appealed. Now, on the appeal, the board asked for a friend of the court, and I was quite surprised. I, of course, oppose this kind of action, but I was quite surprised we had absolute consensus from other members of our board, and it was four to nothing, no, we do not approve of this. So, the North Coast Unified Air Quality District will not be a friend of the court in this action, which will impact ATV users and the state parks in Oceano. I'm very pleased to report that, that's a good sign. Last Saturday evening, Angie and I watched the tsunami sirens clobber the red bluff roller girls at the fairgrounds. I am definitely a fan of roller derby. It was a great show, and I really appreciated that. Sunday, I attended a picnic of the North Coast Cliffhangers. It's the local group of four-wheelers, and I met a gentleman who will speak today, his name is Don Amador. He's the Western Representative of the Blue Ribbon Coalition, and he's gonna talk to us about twenty-four seventy-seven. This is a situation where roads are being closed to public access, and it's being done by the U.S. Forest Service, and for reasons that, again, puzzling me, dry, old Port Orford cedar rot or what have you, but we're hoping to get Tyrone Kelly back here to explain why these roads remain closed, they should not be closed, and Mr. Amador will speak to that today. Yesterday, I also met with Del Norte County Representative in Washington, D.C., Greg Burns. I related to him my two major areas of concern, which is finding a permanent road around last chance grade and the challenges our community is encountering with working with our local hospital in maintaining the very highest level of services. I spoke to Greg about the out-of-control Coastal Commission's policy of insisting on a very unreasonable four-to-one ratio to surrender our very limited private property for use to just for the privilege of developing our airport. And nobody wants an airport more than I do, but again, at what price? And that was my week.
Chair? Okay, thank you. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. I had to start out with a meeting with staff on our H-SIP program, which is the Highway Safety Improvement Program. We were discussing some projects that were gonna come before the Local Transportation Commission, and those, all of those projects were given the nod to go ahead with through an LTICO. Had an LTICO meeting, Local Transportation Commission meeting, that didn't have enough, didn't have a quorum, so we had to make it again the next day. Most of that discussion was on the H-SIP projects that the county has and other entities, the city tribes can be involved in that, although they had no projects. Also had a, had another staff meeting on the upcoming UROC two-by-two, and then we had a UROC two-by-two meeting, which was a pretty good meeting. They want to meet more often, discuss the issues that we have, that we have. There's quite a few things out there, the new hotel casino project that they've got going, other issues that they're wanting to abandon some county roads, so we want to keep the dialogue going and see if we can't come to some sort of mutual agreement there. As Supervisor Gitlin mentioned, we did have a meeting on Rule Twenty for undergrounding utilities, and there's a couple of things that happened with undergrounding. It's not just power that gets undergrounded, but it's also cable and telephone. So, the telephone has a pot of money that they can use to put underground telephone wires in, but the cable company does not have a program like that, so they can just decide not to have service. If it costs them too much to put it underground, they can just say, well, we're just not gonna serve that little area. And for the money that we've got, they figure we could get four, maybe five blocks at the very most, and at the end of each one of these undergrounding segments, you have to put a freestanding steel pole, big ugly-looking thing, has to be self-supporting. So, for the amount of money that we have, and it's not even a halfway project, it's, you know, it's a very small percentage of what really needs to be done to make, to have an effective aesthetic look for undergrounding utilities. So, what we've got is not near enough. I think we need to at least get a ten to twelve-block stretch in order to get some sort of aesthetic value out of undergrounding these utilities. And we also need to find out what the cable company's gonna do, what the phone company's gonna do. So, there's a lot that goes into that, it's missed on a matter of saying, yeah, okay, let's underground it, go ahead and do it. There's a lot of research that has to go into that. I went to a North Coast Integrated Regional Water Management Plan meeting, which we've changed the name now, makes it much nicer, if I can remember it, it's the North Coast Resource Partnership. Jim Barnes, the, our county engineer, and I went to that meeting. We're reviewing the plan version three, which, we have a lot of, we have a lot of water, whether it's wastewater or water supply issues in Del Norte County, lift stations. We had three projects that we submitted last year, all three of them were in the top ten. We ended up funding the Big Rock Water District and their new water tower, but we had two other good projects that, one of them was in Smith River, and the other one was lift stations in Crescent City and Del Norte County, both good projects, and will probably get funding in the upcoming awards of money, so that's a good thing. I met with Greg Burns, our lobbyist in Washington, D.C., as Supervisor Gitlin stated he's interested in issues that he can help us with on the federal level, and the forest is one big issue that I certainly have, and also the airport, and those are certainly on the top of his list, and he's been keeping an eye out for us, and we'll probably hear from him a little later. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, thank you. For the first week that we were, we've been out for two weeks, and the first week I had left for the Coastal Commission meeting, which I was prompted to drive because of the airplane on the runway in San Francisco, and so I was able to go all the way to Ventura by car, and then spent some time with my granddaughters, my granddaughter and my daughter and her son in Pasadena. So, I had a week where I was on the road, and I can tell you how nice it is to come home. It's always a pleasure when you see that first glimpse of Crescent City coming in at night on the highway, and you can guarantee that you're home, so it was a nice trip. I met with FPPC Commissioner Sandoval, she visited the North Coast, and Supervisor Finnegan and I, along with other members of the staff and some city representatives, talked about the type of service that needs to continue to happen in relationship to the communications of California. We talked a bit about the condition of our cable. We talked a bit about the people had, that had received the letters about their telephone company no longer being under their jurisdiction, but they still are under their jurisdiction. It was a cleanup letter that she assured us that that's not going to have an ill effect. But we spent quite a bit of time on what's called the basic safety service, of which people in the community that are low-income can secure a phone line in their house for safety, and I think it runs a little bit under seven dollars a month. So, it's an important service that, we talked about the need to get the information out, and she is going to get me some flyers that we can start making sure that people are served, because the FPPC is also now trying to wrap their head around cell service, and should they have that type of service available for emergencies, since the phone companies are saying that they would like to get rid of the wire and go completely cell. She assured us that the FPPC is not in agreement with that, with the phone companies, but they are taking into, taking a look to see if there is some way they could create a safety service for cell users. We talked about the intermittent service, and she was pretty amazed, as she was sitting here, her phone was on safety lock because it's AT&amp;T, and it was like, well, welcome to my life, you know, and so she was, they're trying to work on how they fill the holes of non-service, because she said that's one thing that she's learned on the commission by visiting communities, especially rural communities, there's this assumption that many of the commissioners have, that cell service is fast and it's available and it's, you can count on it. And same way with your cable, and same way with any kind of electronic communication. So, she was very, listening very carefully. She had done an incredible amount of research, she knew the demographics of the community, and knew the significance of the service, for the safety service for people who are low-income or seniors that need to make sure they can get to a telephone in a case of an emergency. I participated in the healthcare and counties two-by-two with Supervisor Sullivan. There were many people that were, we, what we did is we took a look at the court settlement that the healthcare district participated in, and went over that a little bit, and then spent a little bit of time, we heard from the community about the fear of regionalization and the fear of critical access, and what it all means. I spent a little bit of time, because I was hoping that the county, Sutter, and the healthcare district could actually sit and talk about hospital options, hospital classifications, being it, are we a low-volume hospital, are we a Medi-Cal Medicare hospital, are we a sole community hospital or rural hospital, because each one of those designations, and so, I think there are about six that I can identify at this point, but each one of those dead, each one of those identified hospital types creates a Medi-Cal, a Medicare reimbursement rate, and the Medicare reimbursement rate then also triggers the Medi-Cal rate, and we're running at about seventy-eight percent of the people who are using the hospital are either Medicare or Medi-Cal for the service. And so, if we can figure a way that there's a better reimbursement rate, that would be of assistance for us. And like a Medi-Cal Medicare hospital has a higher reimbursement rate. Ours is an acute care hospital, and it's the reimbursement rate for Medi-Cal and Medicare are based on an urban-centric model, which means they identify all hospitals and then take an average cost, which means that we're competing with a, we're competing with a hospital of four or five hundred beds, saying, well, this is how much it costs us, but the reimbursement that the hospital gets is really low because their costs are less. So, I'm hoping that we can seriously take a look at that type of language and possibly then get the next step, which would be Jared Huffman to possibly carry some language, or actually carry language within, just right to the Medicare office, because the Medicare office, if they gave us a different distinction, may raise our reimbursement. So, that's what we kind of talked about at the two-by-two. I was at a table at the farmer's market on Saturday and spent the day there, and it was a great, it's just, it's a really fun event for people to see each other and hang out, so that was great. On Sunday, I went to former Supervisor Rick Bennett's eighty-fifth birthday, and he is doing really well, and there shows there is life after being a supervisor in this county. So, I met with Greg Burns, our lobbyist from Washington, D.C., and we spent considerable amount of time talking about Medicare and Medi-Cal and how we can flip. For instance, our health center, the community health center, has a reimbursement rate, a designation, that allows them for a hundred percent reimbursement, and that's why you can see the clinic flourishing. So, we just have to figure out how do we get our hospital into a better category, not just, I mean, it's gonna be, it's an uphill battle, but that's part of what we need to do. Anyway, I talked with Greg Burns considerable amount of time about the significance of the hospital and what needs to happen, and how, just to get the people to understand the significance of when somebody is flown out and they release you, and you have to get on a Greyhound bus to get home after having, you know, an appendix surgery or something to that nature. It's not, it's not possible for the majority of our, of our community that to be able to get somebody to go pick up their auntie in San Francisco, or, you know, so we really have to be diligent about attempting to get this piece under control. I also talked- control. I also talked with him quite a bit about the airport, and possibilities of, of how we could make sure that the grant money doesn't go away at the end of the federal fiscal year. And I'm not sure, I, I don't have an answer for that at this point, but that's some of the, that was the discussion I had with him. Later on this week, the EMS's meeting, I participate in that meeting via a phone meeting from the desk upstairs. And we, Supervisor Sullivan and I are gonna meet at Smith River to talk about Ray's food place closing in Smith River tomorrow evening. And that's about it. And the senior senator board meets this afternoon, and I'll be there.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. It had, it's been busy a couple of weeks, but also on the breakdown of utilities, undergrounding utilities, I, I think the figure, one point eight was combined with the city pot last time, or is it, we have one point eight now? Okay, 'cause we were one, two.
We have five years of borrowing power also.
Oh, on top of that. Okay. 'Cause we'd stored up like one point two, and the city had a couple hundred thousand built up on theirs. Okay.
Chair Sullivan, it accumulates at about two hundred thousand a year for the county.
Yeah, good project. I agree. You gotta get, you gotta get a good expanse to be able to make it worthwhile. I know I met with Monty last year, and his, when we looked at different spots within the community, his belief the best bang for the buck was from Ninth Street down to right where Denny's is at. And that was about, that was gonna use up the whole pool of money. So, and he, he failed to mention the two metal rods that had to be stuck out at both ends of that. So.
Well, there, there was one positive note out of that, though. And now, under the rule twenty, they can actually do the lateral, so they can actually hook up to the business or the residence. So that money can be included to do that.
And when, when did that change?
Just a year or so ago, so.
Nice. 'Cause the, the deal before is the, the business owners and the residential owners of the, the houses that run along that strip, they were gonna have to themselves pay for the underground, the lateral that goes into their, to their house. So it was a, it was a cost borne by the individual citizen. So that's, that's good news. Attended the local transportation commission meeting, and once again, Last Chance Grade is, is on the agenda and continues to be on as a priority to deal with that. The Transportation Commission is drafting another letter to follow up with Caltrans to make, with Caltrans to make sure it is a priority item for them as well. On, on a Saturday note, attended Eleanor Peep's memorial services, and those of you who knew Eleanor, she was, the description at the memorial service was a firecracker. And I think that was, if you knew Eleanor, you knew exactly how she was. Always positive. Her, her family so, had a, a party afterwards just to celebrate, and that's how Eleanor was. She wanted, wanted to go out with a bang. So anyway, she'll be greatly missed. I have fielded several constituent calls since last, last week's planning commission meeting about concerns of conflicts of interest. And we are looking into that, but there are some, some real big concerns about that, and it concerns me as well. More to come on that. Saturday was a, a packed day, two Saturdays ago. Attended the ribbon cutting for Lucky Seven Hotel. It's a beautiful hotel. They did a great job on the work, used a lot of local labor in the process, which is always an encouraging thing. But it's impressive hotel when you go into it. And then, right after that, ran out to Rodney Jan's memorial service out at Elk Valley Community Center. And the place was packed. Rodney was a good friend, and he was kind of a fixture at the school district. I wasn't aware that he, he literally skipped three grades growing up through, from school. His brother was there and announced that, you know, he got sick one grade, and then skipped right to the next grade, and they passed him on. I think he jumped from fifth to eighth grade in, in a very short period of time. But he, he definitely, and the sad thing is, he was just ready to retire that week. So it's unfortunate, and we pass our condolences and prayers on to, to his family. So. And then, from there, went straight from there out to the very end of the Gasky Raph races. And unfortunately, I didn't get to see most of the event, but it was very well attended. We, we stopped by a couple houses after the Raph races, and there were still people lingering. So it was really well done, and congratulate, Gina Bowen was the main organizer, and she did a great job with it. Attended a two by two with the healthcare district and Supervisor McClure as well, and, and she described. And I want to thank Adam from the Triple Gate for an accurate description of how the meeting went, and the information that was, was relayed in the public. There was a lot of misunderstanding prior to leading into the meeting, and unfortunately, the information that was sent out, and I had a conversation with Dr. Duncan about it, as well as by email in Guatemala, and he is supposed to be back next week, so we'll have some further discussions. But a two by two, as is described in the paper, is an informational sharing only meeting. There is no vote, there's no action taken. But we've been saying for a while, we wanted to coordinate with the healthcare district because they are the lead agency on healthcare. They're a special taxing district that deals with healthcare in this community. So we did share some information and, and learned kind of, and what we were told is our hands are tied. As you probably read in the paper today, I don't completely agree with that. So I believe there is a lot more coming on this. And it is, the plus on that is the community as a whole, we had about ninety people plus, plus or minus that showed up, and people are concerned, and with legitimate reasons. And one of the things, and we have it on the agenda today, to send another letter to Sutter, to the local hospital board and Mother Sutter, to reiterate our request for information. We've been opposed to regionalization and downsizing the hospital. There could be done a tremendous amount by releasing minutes from meetings. That would do a lot to restore trust and confidence in the community. And that's the position we're taking, and that's, that's why it's on the agenda today. The plus side is great to see participation in, in the meetings. That's the, I, I think the other supervisors will agree, the numerous two by two meetings we've had in the years being on the board, I think the most I've ever seen at a two by two meeting, maybe it was eight to ten people. So having in excess of ninety people there is, is pretty impressive. The, also did happen, driving down Harell Street, the stop signs are, are, are the, are the, are a good fix. They are gonna get people off that road and push them back to North Creston 101. The more I go down there, if we'd actually gotten to a point, obviously financially didn't have the funds to do it, to shave that hill, we would have actually sped traffic up, not slowed it down. So the stop signs were a really good thing, and they're up immediately. Road Department did a great job, and I know the residents are happy, happy with it as well. Was interviewed by Monica with KIEM TV out of Eureka regarding Last Chance Grade, and then she also slipped in a couple questions about Sutter Coast also. And it's good to see the local news showing interest in Delmar County, and we appreciate her being up here, 'cause in the past, sometimes we've always kind of felt neglected on that side. Attended a gender review, and then late this afternoon, I'll have a meeting with Greg Burns, our federal lobbyist. And then tomorrow night at the Smith River Community Hall, we are gonna have a meeting regarding, with Supervisor McClure and CAO Serena, we are gonna have a meeting with the community out there in regards to Ray's closing out there. And if anything, we want to see if we can get them to delay the closure. Obviously, it's a private business, and there is not a lot the board can do to force them to stay open. But if we can reach some kind of in-between way to either transition to a different business, or at least to delay their actual closing because of the impact it will have to folks that don't have that mobility in, in Smith River. So that, that is the intent, and we've invited, I know C and K Markets has been invited to this meeting. So. And I want to thank Joni Force for, she's been the main organizer behind getting the meeting together. Okay. At this point, we are going to, and then we have obviously Solid Waste meeting this, this afternoon also, Supervisor, Supervisor Gitlin and I do. So we are going to go into timed item, that was to be at ten twenty-five, it's public comment period. Could I get a show of hands in the audience, everyone who wants to speak during public comment? Okay. So we'll start a list down here, as if, if you've already, if you haven't signed up to talk on public comment, go ahead and write your name down, so we don't miss anybody in the process. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board, well, actually, I'm sorry, if you could sign up, I almost skipped over Jay. So, sorry about that, Jay. I know, sometimes it's, so I'm gonna let him do, we're gonna hear a brief report from our county administrative officer. But if you haven't signed up for public comment, please come over and sign up your name. So you, we have everyone on it.
Thought I'd get away with it.
Yeah.
A lot of the meetings that were mentioned, I also attended, but also, I'll just kind of gloss over a few of those. Pacific Core meeting on the rule twenty undergrounding, I was at that meeting. Obviously, we're in the middle of our budget development, and we've been meeting on that, trying to come up with what the solutions that will end up in a final budget. Attended the Solid Waste Committee meeting. Have been requested by Supervisor Hemmingson, and have been in touch with Don Amador regarding discussions with State OHV Division, trying to come up with some solutions on some of our roads that we had some barriers, and it put, placed in front of us because of some of the statutes or, or regulations that couldn't be met. And now it looks like there may be some avenues on some of our roads, trying to determine the status of those roads, so that we also don't shoot ourselves in the foot regarding funding for the road, road fund. Did a little research in regards to yield tax and payments in lieu of taxes coming from the federal government. This year, there has been an increase in the payment in lieu of taxes, and that'll help with our budget issues. But I wanted to also do a little research to try to make sure that we're getting the amount that is owed to us. Had miscellaneous personnel-related tasks and issues, and obviously can't get into those, but suffice to say that takes up considerable amount of time. Have been working with tri-agency on a voluntary basis, basically, to assist with some of the transitions. The EDC representative is no longer gonna be able to do their accounting functions, and we volunteered to get involved and assist to be able to pay the bills. Also, I've been in touch with John Irwin and also Connie Stewart in regards to the last mile grant that's out there, and will assist them hopefully in administering that, and get that taken care of. Attended the two by two with the Urock Tribe, had miscellaneous questions and, and projects that needed to be addressed in community development regarding the airport, engineering, and roads. Have been involved in trying to come up with some solutions for the memorandum of understanding for dispatch services with the volunteer fire department, departments. And we'll be writing a counterproposal to that this week, and hopefully have that out to them next week. We are in the, as reported out, I think numerous times over the last few months, have been trying to address the seven hundred Fifth Street building. And we have budgeted for that at this point. Not sure whether or not we will be able to fund that totally. We are now at an RFP stage, which is a request for proposals for the abatement of the hazardous materials that were determined to be located nearby a previous consultant that we had to contract with to determine whether or not hazardous materials indeed were inside the building. We do have some lead-based paint issues, and we do have some asbestos issues. So the request for proposals has gone out. It's a competitive process. We hope to get the best deal possible, and then we will be able to determine what we have in the budget, and whether or not we'll be able to follow up with those costs. Hopeful that that will happen. There are some alternatives regarding removal of the building. Obviously, the board has given this direction in the past. Budget issues over the last several years have become a problem in being able to deal with these types of capital projects. But we will be following up on that. And the board will either see a contract, or we'll have a, a request put in, in front of the board to give some direction to staff based on what alternatives we'll bring forward. And miscellaneous negotiations with the different groups.
Okay. Thank you. No, I appreciate the update. So you, you will keep us informed as we get closer. I know it's been a priority for the board in the past to get that building removed. So appreciate the update on that. At this point, we are going to officially open public comment up. So Tony, if you could read the first name off the list, please.
Don Amador.
Good morning, board. My name is Don Amador. I'm the Western representative for the Blue Ribbon Coalition. I first want to say it's an honor to speak before you today, I think for the first time, addressing the board formally. I wanted to thank the board for being involved in access and recreation issues for over, I think about the last fifteen years since I've been coming up here, starting with Chuck Blackburn, and taking over. Jerry's done a great job, and Mike, and David, and Martha, and now we've got Supervisor Gitlin. Just really think it's important for county boards, you have a critical role to play in guarding access to public lands. Just several quick items. I know we're short on time. Supervisor Gitlin mentioned the RS-2477 that you filed. I think there's some tools available. Of course, I think we need to wait to find out what the Forest Service responds back, or what routes they recognize as county roads can be designated as non-highways under the thirty-eight-hundred section of the vehicle code. Same, same way with the, like a lot of your three and four series roads that are non-paved. Those are real critical to the looped opportunities on the forest. And I think those can be, we don't have to wait for the Forest Service to respond on the RS-2477 routes. We already know your, a lot of your county roads. And looking at those non-highway designations, Lassens County has done it. Their residents are happy. I think it's a good tool to look at. So I'd encourage you to do that. High Plateau, actually, that was one of my first recreation projects up here, working with the local groups in the late nineteen nineties. Forest Service closed High Plateau based on Port Over Cedar Root Rock concerns. There's about thirty or forty miles of routes up there. That plan was, it was a project-level NIPA document that took effect in two thousand. Since then, we've had the Biscuit Fire, we've had travel management. A lot of roads and trails have been closed. I think it's important for the county to petition or ask the Forest Service to relook at that project, because I think that's a great opportunity up there. It was recognized in the Smith River NRA Act as an OHV area, and it's been closed for the last thirteen years. So I think it's time that Forest Service look at that again. Talawaddunes, met with Chris Conlon, the new Deputy Director of OHV Division at State Parks, mentioned the, our continued interest in getting ATV use back out there, which is consistent with their last management plan, the eighty-two interim management plan. He said he'd be willing to look at that, if the county is so willing. I think one of the benefits would be if green sticker vehicles are allowed back out there, then the green sticker program could pay for law enforcement and help take care of the area. So that's a, I think that's a doable thing. Also, over the last four or five years, we've talked about a county OHV park out, out in that area. I think it's time to look at that again. I think there's money available to help put in a park like that. It'd be a great community enhancement, I believe, and with hopefully connection out to the wave slope. Then also the status of the La Valley case, the Mad River Biologist scandal. Talked with some recreationists just this morning. They're interested in having the county look at when the deadline is for the local council to file local charges. I, I understand that the county backed off so the feds could pursue that. But there's a concern because so many decisions have been made based on the science, or lack thereof, from Mad River Biologists. We have closures all over the place. We want, I think the locals want to have the county reserve their option, or guard that option, to pursue legal action if the federal government drops the ball. Then, lastly, the Last Chance Grade, I think I would encourage you to keep pursuing that, particularly try to engage state park leadership. I think they're, can be an important partner in helping push that through. I think it's an emergency, and I would urge you to pursue it as such. Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Don, before you, before you take off, I've just got a couple of questions for you. The High Plateau area, you know, normally when the Forest Service does a closure for Cedar Root Rock, it's seasonal. And this, this has gone on for a long time, and, and what, do you know what their rationale, what they're figuring their rationale was for not doing a seasonal closure like they do throughout the rest of the forest?
No, I mean, and that's, that's been one of our concerns, actually since they closed it, is that the rationale for that closure didn't make a lot of sense in two thousand. And in two thousand and thirteen, particularly considering the Biscuit Fire and some of the other things, it makes even less sense today. And so I think, you know, formal petition from you guys to get a, a written response on exactly why the Forest Service is continuing to keep that area closed would be important.
And, and normally when they close a road, isn't there, don't they have a limitation as far as the, the amount of time? I always thought it was a year. If they close a road for longer than a year?
Yeah, generally, emergency closures are, are for one year. Yeah, generally, emergency closures are for one year, although, you know, sometimes due to lack of staff, sequestration, you know, it can go on for longer, but it's supposed to be one year. And that's an important standard for, you know, agencies like yourself to hold the beds accountable. You know, you need a petition to ask, why is it closed? Why is this closure continuing?
Great. And then, and then on the, the OHV, Chris Collins?
Chris Conlon, the new Deputy Director.
And you'll email me all that information?
Yes, I will get that contacted.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Don, let me, let me just talk about, have you talk a little bit more about the potential of having an ATV park out at Lower Talawa Dunes?
Sure.
Where, where do we stand on this in terms of where do we, do we need an feasibility study? Where do we stand as far as you're up to date? Bring me up to date on our timetable there.
Well, I know we're really short on time. The statute that created the OHV program, which was reauthorized in 2008, directs the department to place new OHV parks in areas that are underserved. You guys have a great coastal facility here, particularly for people in the summer that want to come over from the valley. So it's really in their charter to work with counties. You know, and I actually think counties, you, you actually get a higher rating if you try to put in a park. There's money for that right now. I think we have a short window of opportunity for the next, you know, two or three years. We have new leadership at State Parks. I just want to tell you that General Jackson, who's the new Deputy Director, replaced Ruth Coleman, I've been on tours with him, he personally has visited more recreation sites than the leadership or, I don't like to use that term, but leadership at State Parks prior had visited in 20 years. So his six months, he's done more to see what on the ground. He leads from the front and I think engaging him in some of these issues where State Parks has a role is really important.
Don, thanks for, for all your help and, and Blue Ribbon.
Yeah, thanks for definitely keeping us in the loop on that. We appreciate your support on that, Don. Public comment, next speaker.
I'm Roy Bieber. I'm here again. I said I was going to make a report card. I didn't make an individual report card, but kind of the general thing that concerns me and the bigger thing to go back to is the Martinelli thing. And that thing is not going to go away. It's going to come up at every election. And remember, every election, it's going to come up because you did not watch county money. You let it flow 700 miles to the south. Every one of you knew what was happening. I even came and told you that one of you I interviewed with was told no doctor would do it. That was not true. Nobody looked into it. I think the main reason you don't want to look into it, you're going to find out it's right and then you're going to have to do something about it. I mean, I don't think county employees should be able to lie to the board supervisors. And it definitely happened. And nobody has looked into it. By the way, Mr. Hemmingson, these poles that they're going to put up, are they going to have lights on them? Will they have to go through coastal, like the memorial down at the county thing to get lights? We have so many streetlights. We have lights in parking lots, but we can't get two lights or something on a memorial. I can't understand that. So, and I think that all of you are elected by the people in your district and I think you deserve to be treated equally. And I'm talking about the chair not treating board members equally. You show prejudice to ones and that's wrong. And furthermore, Mr. Chairman, when you use your business in your, in the county, this room, that is a definite conflict. You sent me a letter to take my business elsewhere because of something that happened in this room. I think you have to look at your, and your little comments every time one of these things happens, it's, oh, I'm trying to have a meeting here or this is a democratic thing or something. I mean, I don't, I don't appreciate those. I don't think, but you can do it, but we can't. And that's it for this time, but we'll watch. Oh, I did, I did notice in the triplicate that one of the supervisors was quoted with foul language and I don't think that's necessary. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm here to speak about the problems that we're having on the House at 50 K, that halfway house that Mr.
Ma'am, we're, that's actually, I think that's, is that on the agenda? I thought that was, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And we are, we are concerned about, my husband has experienced some incidents there. I'm concerned with, there's supposed to be a child sex offender there and I've checked the register and there are about 24 of the 80 people that, what addresses as Crescent City that don't have a specific house address, just a general Crescent City address. And we are concerned. Our neighbor has, our neighbors have children, but they're not here today. But the block party that Mr. Gitlin mentioned earlier was a little bit of a problem because some, it didn't appear to be supervised. And some of the youngsters there went into the yards of the neighboring houses and that and were very unruly. And we want to see what Mr. Blannick has to say about supervision of the people residing there and when they had their parties there. Thank you.
Ma'am, were, were you at the block party when all was happening?
No, no, no. Our house is on 50 K. It's at a 90-degree angle.
Okay, and that's your primary residence?
Yes, no, it's not. It's a rental. Our residence is a block away.
Okay, okay. All right.
Then he's, he's next.
Okay, is that next speaker, my stand? Okay, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Stan Jones, Corus Hesman. And the lady that bought the property she's talking about where they went in the backyard without permission, they had a party there that night and closed off the road between Fourth and Fifth on K and she lives directly across the street. And she's worried about her house because she says it's not saleable now like it is with these people there. Her property value is going down and she's concerned about safety because they threatened her. They threatened her when she went over to talk about her making too much noise. I think it was the guy in charge, I'm not sure who it was, but she was threatened. Mr. Gitlin knows that, he just told that too. And I was over there one day and my, the guy who lives in the apartment right next to our house says, Stan, he said, I was outside with my friend and this woman comes across the street and her house cooked.
See you there.
Thank you, ladies. You did a very good job. Well done. Can I just ask a quick question?
I know that I, the pork that I purchased from the 4H is the best ever and I plan on being there again this year for some.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yeah, likewise, I'll be there, girls. And I, I love the way you stand on your tiptoes when you get up there. That's a, that's a good, good trait to have. I think you're going to grow a few more inches before you're done, but anyway, good job. And we'll see you Sunday, August 4th, is that? Okay, we'll be there. Thanks.
All right, thank you, ladies. Well done. Next speaker.
Good morning, Linda Sutter, 5th District. Sorry for the attire, but I found out there was a BOS meeting this morning and at the gym, so I thought I'd come over. I'd like to say, Mr. Gitlin, you are a shining star and Tony, but all of you have a lot on your plate and I really appreciate the effort that you put into, you know, paying attention to these incredible issues regarding the Settler Coast Hospital and everything else that's going on in our, our county. As far as the budget for the building that you plan to demolish, Mr. Serena, I, I guess there's a couple of gigs in town that will take your toxic waste and dispose of it free of charge on the seven and a half acre on Mr. Pappas' land behind the Hayes Feed Store in Olive Valley, just in case you want to know. And wink, wink. And that's about it for the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Donna Westfall.
Donna Westfall.
Donna Westfall, is it true that 52 cents of every dollar that comes into the county is paid out to Health and Human Resources? If that's the case, Blatnick's budget needs to be scrutinized by line item and here's why. When a dozen or so people put in complaints to him in 2011 about the HFSA toxic industrial waste put into drinking water, he sent me and everyone that sent in a complaint a form letter dated 2009 how safe and effective water fluoridation was. That was totally unacceptable. The message it sent was that he didn't do his research and he wasn't interested. So today, when I see three agenda items totaling a quarter million dollars to be sent out of the area, I say it's time to stop and question what's going on. What are the histories? Who is being helped and why isn't that money staying local instead of being sent to Uba City? Also, when I hear about kids taken out of their homes and put into foster care so that parents have to threaten to sue the county to get them back, I wonder what kinds of oversights does Blatnick's organization have? Speaking of lawsuits, I understand there have been 25 in the last six years against the county and the Sheriff's Department for civil rights violation and the question is, what kinds of training are our sheriff's deputies getting in civil rights? How many more lawsuits can the county withstand and how much has been paid out for these civil rights violations? Which brings me to my next issue, the grand jury. Jurors were just impaneled on July 9th. I truly hope that the newly impaneled jurors will do a good and thorough job investigating complaints instead of allowing government plants to influence them. Lastly, I'm very happy to hear that publisher of the triplicate, Michelle Thomas Postal, is retiring and I hope that the new publisher will have a higher standard of integrity that does not buy into the good old boy system. Plus, I hope that they will stop their policy of ruining reputations with their bad and biased reporting, which was part of the reason I started crescentcitytimes.com online newspaper. Thank you.
Next speaker.
That's it.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing no public comment, I am going to close the public comment period. And we had a timed item at 10:30. And we're moving along really quickly here. Moving, item 26 in the agenda, which is a way of full reading, read by title only and adopt an ordinance adding chapter 7.65 entitled relating to partnership health plan of California Commission to Title VII of the Delnort County Code as requested by Director of Health and Human Services. Gary.
Good morning. This is our second reading, second and final reading, and we had discussed this at a prior meeting. And just wanted to know if there's any additional questions or feedback or comments so we can hopefully move forward.
Gary, can you just give a summary of it just for?
Sure, this is, this is about the board supervisors having the authority to appoint right now one person to a commission. The commission consists of all the counties that will be part of the new Medi-Cal Managed Care Plan for Health Services and essentially that will cover 14 counties, including Delnort County. And this is our opportunity to actually sit on their board and help make decisions, set policy and directions for the future of healthcare services for Medi-Cal recipients.
Okay. A question from board members. Yeah. Supervisor McClure.
I just have a comment and that is that over and over again, we will say we need local control and we want local input and we have this difficulty in the state. And through your efforts, we were able to get Delnort and Humboldt and Modock and Lassen and Shasta and Siskiyou and Trinity. We're one group now. We don't have to do what Marin does. We don't have to do what Orange does. We don't have to do what San Diego County does. We finally have this consortium of counties where we're going to be able to take a bigger step and have more impact. And thank you for your diligent work in making sure that that happened.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Thanks. Okay, at this point, I'm going to open, I'll actually entertain a motion.
I move to approve, I don't have the language in front of me, so I will, I move to adopt ordinance adding chapter 7.65 entitled relating to partnerships health plan of California, of the California Commission to Title VII of the Delnort County Code.
Sorry. Just a second. Any public comment on this item? This is the second reading of it and it will be official after today's board meeting if it's passed. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board, close the public comment. Tony, could you pull, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. I do, and we have another timed item, the item 27, which followed right after, 10:45. I, I will note that Supervisor Finning is not here because he's, he's representing the county at the NACO Annual Meeting, which is National Association of Counties. He's our representative on, that's why he's not in the board meeting today. Item 27, 10:45, Redwood Coast Regional Center Presentation, Dr. Holden.
I had a PowerPoint presentation, is that going to be part of this? Let me hand these out.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Jay Holden, otherwise known as Dr. Jay, down from Lakeport, Ukiah area for a lot of years. I'm, among other things, a consulting psychologist with the Redwood Coast Regional Center. You have an office here and my purpose here today is to try to increase your understanding of who Regional Center is, what we offer and how we operate. I want to thank Roger for getting me, inviting me to come make this presentation. I make these presentations in all four of our counties that the Redwood Coast covers, Humboldt, Delnort, Mendocino and Lake, because there's been a lot of misunderstanding and lack of understanding about what the Regional Center is. I start my presentation with a quote from Gandhi, although it's been attributed to others, that civilization is measured by how it treats its weakest or most vulnerable members. And I am here to introduce you to portions of our population that qualify for that, which is one of the reasons I really like my work and it's meaningful to me. I'm going to try to see if I can operate this slideshow with a left click or left click. Whoops, I'm all over the place now.
Right click?
Right click. I'll try that. That's what I get. Where do I go to next?
At the top. There you go.
Yeah, I guess that's right. Oh, boy. Now left? Try the left. There we go. All right, I think we got it going here. I moved here from Ohio to do my clinical internship at Mendocino State Hospital. That was in the early 70s. An amazing experience. And out in the back corner of that hospital, there was a locked facility that had the words mental retardation written on the side of it. As an intern, I was allowed to pick the units that I wanted to work on. I got a tour of the whole place. I went in and I observed something like this. This is from a book called Christmas in Purgatory, Taken Inside a Facility Such as Mendocino State Hospital Was for Folks With These Conditions in Those Days. If a child was born and appeared to have mental retardation, which we now call intellectual disability, Down Syndrome being one common form of it, they were typically, the parents were told by the doctor that the best thing that could happen here is they have state facilities for these people. You're not going to be able to raise them, they're going to be stigmatized. Best that you turn your child over to the state hospital and probably best if you don't visit that child because it'll be upsetting to them. And so our people, as I call them, led this sort of life their entire life and it was pretty much sit down and shut up or we'll tranquilize you, there were no educational opportunities, there were no vocational or social opportunities. It was within my lifetime, sorry to say, that that was a deplorable state of affairs for our people. In 1977, the Lanterman Act was passed, which to my knowledge is the only entitlement, and I say that word with pride, program for people with developmental, intellectual disabilities in the United States. What it did is it What it did is it established twenty-one regional centers around the state, Redwood Coast being one of those, to provide support to people with intellectual disability formerly known as mental retardation, cerebral palsy, epilepsy, autism, and conditions closely related to intellectual disability or requiring similar support services. We don't serve people that have solely physical, solely psychiatric or solely learning disabilities. We have some certain other conditions to whom we serve. The condition has to have originated before age eighteen. Somebody falls off their motorcycle on the last day of their seventeenth birthday, they'll qualify. If they fall off the next day and bust their heart open, it's going to be a gray area call. However, we do take people in at any age. If we can substantiate that they were qualified before their eighteenth birthday. So we'll go and look at old school records. We'll have people come in thirty, forty, fifty years old even, who if we were able to get the adequate medical and school records, we're going to be able to qualify. Ours, in contrast to mental health, which is based on a recovery model, we don't expect our people to recover from these conditions. These are expected to be lifetime handicapping conditions for these folks. And it must constitute a substantial handicap. Cerebral palsy, epilepsy, autism, these are considered spectrum disorders. You can have a lot of it or you can have a little of it. In order to qualify for our services, you have to have a lot of it. You have to have substantial handicaps, significant functional limitations, and at least three life activity areas, which I list there, and I'm not going to go through the whole list. But you can, you can see the sorts of things that they have to have deficits in. So primarily, we're an agency for people with intellectual disabilities. That means they get scores of seventy or below on standard IQ tests, adaptive functioning tests, and they represent the lowest two percent of our community in terms of intellectual functioning. We know some of the causes of intellectual disability. Down Syndrome, of course, other genetic syndromes that we're getting better at identifying. But far and away, the principal cause of intellectual disability is fetal alcohol exposure. And what the state did is they contract out to different providers in these twenty-one areas to, they accept proposals to operate these regional centers under the regulations that the state sets up. Ours is operated by the nonprofit Redwood Coast Developmental Services Corporation. And one of the things important to know about Regional Center in terms of what we do is we don't do direct service. We are limited by law in what we can provide. We provide primarily case management and consultation services. If we're not able to find a direct service that somebody needs in the community, we do have a purchase of service budget, and we have vendors that sign up to provide services for us and we're able to purchase their service. But they're not a Regional Center staff or employee. Regional Centers are limited to case management and consultation. So our primary job is to link the clients once we know them. Once they become eligible, we do a program plan for them that sets out goals for what we hope to accomplish for them and means toward those ends. And our job is to link the clients to what we call the generic or already existing service providers. Or if not to them, a vendored provider for the direct services the person needs. I'll talk more about that in a minute. We covered these four counties. We have offices here. We have one in Crescent City. Karen Saturn is here, who manages our office here locally. We support over three thousand clients in our four county area, about three hundred in Delnort. We have a wonderful vision statement. I'm not going to go through it, but it's, we, we have a lovely view of where we want, what we want for our people. And I would say that we have the lowest institutionalization rate of any Regional Center in the state. It costs about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to keep somebody into what's called a developmental center, which is what used to be a state hospital, but it's exclusively for people with intellectual disabilities. They're called developmental centers. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to keep them in there with a very limited quality of life, as you can imagine, versus an average of forty thousand dollars a year it costs us to support somebody to live in the community. I'm very happy to see them in the community. There were no people in my high school or grade school or any of my schools with this condition. They were sent to state hospitals. So it warms my heart that in my own lifetime, I can see people out there doing landscaping jobs, walking the streets, having friends, having a meal at a restaurant, having a, having a life. So one of the, I'm very happy to say we have the lowest institutionalization rate. We have less than ten people left in the developmental centers and we're working on getting them out. We also correspondingly have the highest cost per client because anytime a Regional Center puts somebody in a developmental center, it goes off the Regional Center's books. So if you want to have a real low cost per client, just keep sending people to state hospital, but it doesn't work out for the taxpayer or the client. So I'm proud that we have the highest cost per client. And then, my particular interest is in mental health. I'm a psychologist and providing, getting mental health services provided to our folks. Our folks have, right from the DSM Diagnostic Manual, four to five times the rate of mental disorders than people who do not have an intellectual disability. Correspondingly, people with intellectual disability have four to five times the rate of abuse in their life, typically severe and chronic rather than just a single episode, resulting in emotional behavioral consequences in ninety-eight percent of the victims. Our people are considered very vulnerable. It's estimated that eighty percent of our folks will be sexually molested before their age eighteen. They often have language deficits. They're often punished for saying things that happen to them or they're ignored. They present with a whole variety of diagnoses that people without intellectual disabilities present with. PTSD, which would be very common because of the abuse rates, anxiety disorders, attention deficits, psychotic disorders and so forth. Because of their communication and coping skills deficits, that makes them especially vulnerable to have a mental disorder as a result of the treatment they've experienced. We got through that. Now, the Lannerman Act itself uses exceptional language when it discusses mental health services for our people. The legislature places a high priority on ensuring that Regional Center clients and their families avail themselves of mental health services which are appropriate. You'll see I have on the handout that is underlined and in bold, appropriate services for their needs. Another thing you need to know about regional centers, according to the law, we're required to be the payer of last resort. We will pay a vendor who's on our vendor panel only if appropriate, quote, generic service providers or other potential funders are not available. Insurances, trusts, other forms of payment have to be regarded first before we can reach into our POS budget and purchase services for these folks. It's part of my job to determine not only what generic services are available, but even if they're there, are they appropriate to the client's need? Our folks tend to be slower to develop therapeutic alliances, slower to make progress. And some of the models for payment of X number of therapy services are not going to be appropriate to our people. You don't give somebody a tenth of an aspirin for a broken leg and expect it to work. So that's part of my job, is trying to determine what is an appropriate length and type of service to meet their mental health needs. Mental health, among their many mandates and imperatives, is the Bronson-McCorcadale Act, which relates to one level on which they can relate to Regional Center. To the extent resources are available, a key phrase, I understand. Public mental health services should be provided to target priority groups. They should address the special needs of people with dual and multiple disabilities. There's been a long history of misconception about our people and about mental health of our people that has caused a historic disconnect between mental health departments and Regional Centers for decades and decades. Some of those include Dr. Fletcher's list of common misconceptions about our people with these disabilities. So we see really, our people actually should get priority in mental health service rather than be excluded from it. However, under the previous misconceptions, it was unclear if our people could even benefit from these. These are some of them. These people act out because of their disability and cannot be treated with conventional therapy. They can't have a mental disorder. They can't control their inappropriate behaviors. They can't learn or achieve insight. Poor candidates for therapy. They don't suffer emotionally, don't have the same needs as most people. And this is a short list. I promise you, I edited this. Some of the more gross misunderstandings about our people from this list. Well, these are all incorrect. As to whether they have the same needs as most people, we finally got around to asking them what they needed. And here's a short list. It's the same thing you need and I need. Love, acceptance, nurturing, be able to risk failure, privacy, have a pet, have some freedom, a chance to travel, have their own possessions, some meaningful activity in their life. Same things we need. We have a movement called People First, which is, I am a person with an intellectual disability. I am a person first and want to be seen that way. What happened historically is this phenomenon of diagnostic overshadowing. Again, this quote from Fletcher, who's head of the National Association for the Duly Diagnosed, and by that we mean somebody with an intellectual disability and a mental disorder. He states that having a diagnosis of intellectual disability can overshadow coexisting mental disorders, predisposing practitioners to overlook the presence of psychopathology because symptomatic behavior is attributed to the intellectual disability. Severe behavior disturbances are not part and parcel of a diagnosis of intellectual disability. Therefore, when some of our people act out and we ask mental health to get involved, if I get the response that all those behaviors are due to their intellectual disability, they're going to have an argument. Because if you go to the DSM and see what qualifies somebody for intellectual disability, the word "behavior" doesn't even appear in there. In other words, severe behavior disturbances, they're not symptomatic, characteristic or diagnostic of an intellectual disability. However, they are symptomatic, characteristic or diagnostic of a variety of mental disorders. In fact, the DSM tries to tie mental disorders to behaviors wherever they can. Because of this historical disconnect between our agencies, in nineteen ninety-nine, Welfare and Institutions Code was amended to read, "The legislature finds and declares that improved cooperative efforts between Regional Centers and county mental health agencies are necessary." They require a memo of understanding to be written between each Regional Center and each mental health department to accomplish a number of goals. Identifying staff to coordinate interagency services and to collaboratively look at diagnosing people and to conduct problem resolution, develop crisis intervention plans collaboratively, develop collaborative procedures for joint conference conferencing, provide for discharge planning after hospitalization, collaborate to provide training to community service providers, which we're doing here at this moment, in which Gary invited me up here to make a presentation to his staff. He made a, had his staff make a presentation hours a few weeks ago on what his agency does, and there were close to fifty people in attendance there. People from probation, schools, hospital and various agencies. So we are moving forward with the intent of this memo of understanding and toward providing training to each other's agency and working collaboratively on arriving at presenting diagnoses, issues of medical necessity, appropriate supports, post-discharge, hospitalization plans and so forth. The other misconception had been, even if somebody qualifies for our service at the mental health departments, they have the appropriate diagnosis for us to treat, are they capable of benefiting from treatment? And this association that I belong to, NADD, I go to their conferences every year and I can assure you, every year, there are people coming forth with success cases of using modern therapies with great success with this population. I list a number of them there. And I'm not going to go through everyone, but you can see at the bottom, for instance, certain skill trainings and assertiveness, social skills, sexuality, anger management, anxiety. These are the same sorts of treatments and problems that everybody else has out there. So once again, people first. But we do have plenty of evidence. I have a huge bibliography of different therapies that work with our people. Of course, psychopharmacology plays a role in here. I have some issues with the extent to which it does. I cite here that in LA, their transitional age youth, for instance, eighty-five percent of them are on psychotropic medications. One in eight are on stimulants, about a third are on antipsychotics, often off-label, not actually clinically tested for those applications, almost always not tested with our population, as our population tends to get excluded from clinical trials of these medications. And I, I offer a couple of books for anybody that wants to follow up further on this because once the Freedom of Information Act allowed us into the pharmaceutical companies' files, we got a much broader picture of how effective or not effective or what kind of side effects and so forth come with these meds. I offer a couple of books there if you want to look into that further. The Emperor's New Drugs and the Heart and Soul of Change. Finally, contact information for screening somebody to see if they might be worth sending to Regional Center for a full-on evaluation. I'm happy to do those. I go to the jails in the South, and when they call me in, take a look at this person, you think they might qualify for Regional Center? If they're even in the ballpark, I'll send them over for a full evaluation. I act as liaison to the jails in the South and to all four mental health departments in our area. And I offer psychological consults to the staff at Regional Center or to any therapist working with our people. I also provide trainings trying to recruit more therapists to become interested in working with our people. And when they do, they find they're really wonderful people to work with. Any referral for eligibility can be sent to that number, release of information and record requests, so forth, to the client's service coordinator. That can be found by calling the Regional Center itself. I didn't have on this slide, but I do have the Crescent City Front Desk number there also. And that's about it. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you for making the presentation. Any questions from board members? Supervisor Gatlin?
Yes, Dr. Holden, I have a question and I have a comment. First, the question or pointed information. Tell us about the training you conducted with Department of Health and Human Services here. And is it ongoing now? Has it been completed or have you yet to start it?
The MOU calls for periodic or regular, I can't remember the exact word. It's not timeline, annual or anything, but regular interagency trainings to improve our knowledge of, because it changes too. Regulations change all the time. What we can and can't do has changed over these budget years. Of course, they've gotten more and more restrictive on what they're allowing us to do. So whenever the occasion arises where training would be beneficial, then one of us will contact the other. We have not, had not, up until this time, ever had that training of any kind between our agencies. And so, I got in contact with Gary and we discussed it and we set a date for it. And we eventually pulled it off. I think it was two to three weeks ago. It was in his shop. As I say, about fifty people attended. I gave this presentation, although in a one-hour length, much more expansive than this, the exact types of services we provide and so forth. That was well-attended, there were good questions asked, good attention, and I think it's a good start. I think we'll probably need further trainings as time goes on and issues get identified. I've called in Menasino County, for instance, for a second training on the issue of fifty-one fifties because we had some folks down there saying, this person has an intellectual disability, therefore we can't fifty-one-fifty them, which is, and hospitals saying, we won't accept somebody fifty-one-fifty, even if they're otherwise eligible, if they have an intellectual disability. This is an issue, this is a legal issue of discrimination. This flies in the face of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so, that's, that's an issue that's come up down there. We're going to have a training on that and work that out. We're going to have another training on the MOU itself, so everybody in the shop knows what this MOU is and how we deal with it. And then, other topics as needed that Gary suggests or that I suggest, we'll have training.
So the mechanism is set up for ongoing training. You're happy with this conduit now?
Yeah. You too, Gary? Yeah.
And just a comment. First of all, you're doing the noblest of all work. These are, these three hundred people who reside in our county are lucky to have you. And I'm, I'm pleased to see that picture from nineteen seventy-four, four decades ago, is, we've come a long way. And I commend you for that. So I'm, you're, my hat's off to you. I'll leave you with a quote also, since you brought up Gandhi, is, "First, they ignore you, then they ridicule you, and then they fight you, and then you win." And that's Gandhi nineteen forty-seven. And that's Gandhi, 1947. So, I wanted to leave that as your mantra also. Thank you.
Any other questions from supervisors or comments? Supervisor McClure.
I would just like to thank you, Dr. Jay, for the services. I work with lots of children that are, have dual diagnosis, and it, I agree with the medication end of it scares me, because a lot of times, it's just, if someone were working with that child, then that behavior would improve rather than medicated. So, they'd do a shuffle instead of an emotional connection to their, to who they are. So, I appreciate that, and I'm going to probably look at both of these books. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, the magic pill has not worked out as well as we had hoped. It has a side effect of leaving parents off the hook for any responsibility. It's a chemical imbalance. Ours is the most medicated population outside of geriatrics, and there are serious issues about informed consent when it comes to this. So, I appreciate your flagging that. I would just leave with the overall mandate of what we do, and that's to have these people have the most independent, productive, meaningful life that they're capable of having.
Highest level of independence.
Highest level of independence, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Jay, for the presentation.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to, we'll go back to, we're going to go to, you know, actually, we're going to, we're going to take budget transfers at this point. Item 18 through 24, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, and just for the record, Tony, that's items 18 through 24 in the budget designated 06, 07, 06, 09, 06-10, 06-12, 06-17, 06-18, and 06-20. Any public comment on this item, on these items? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go to, so that takes on budget transfers. We are going to jump to, back to the beginning of the agenda, to consent agenda. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the, move to accept the consent agenda minus 3, 10, 11, and 12, which will be pulled for discussion. It's been moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any public comment on items besides the number 10, number 3, number 11, and number 12? Any public comment on those items? Aside from, I'm sorry, public comment on items besides those items? Okay. Seeing no public, I'll bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, so let's take up the items. Item number 3, authorize and approve, contract and authorize the chair to sign said contract for part-time child support attorney services at a rate of $68 per hour totaling no more than $73,000 for the fiscal year 2013-14 as requested by Director of Child Support Services, and Debbie Mayhew's the director. Supervisor Gitlin, you pulled this item.
Yes, I did pull it out. Nola, are you here? Thank you.
Nola. Penna, Child Support Services.
Payment, Penya, right.
Penna.
Penya, I'm sorry. We had a nice conversation. My inquiry, of course, was to Debbie Mayhew, and, you know, what's this all about? And I'll tell you why I pulled this off. This is really a shining example that needs to be brought up to the attention of our community, how inexpensive. When I saw $68 an hour for an attorney, I said, "We need to, we need to Xerox you." And I want to, just to bring this up and give you special attention and kudos for me that you seem to be running an extremely efficient department, one that saves a great deal of money, and my hat's off to you. So, I'm very much in support of this, and I would hope that there would be more agencies who would follow your role in finding less expensive ways rather than more expensive ways. And I think the program speaks for itself. You have, tell us about Mr. Martin, and what is his role in your department?
He serves our office approximately half-time, and he travels up from Eureka. He came to us with a lot of experience. He had served in Humboldt County's Child Support Program, and he's been with us between six and seven years now. And we serve about 3,000 cases in our office.
Well, any other questions from supervisors?
Child Support Services has always been very well-run. I know Supervisor Hemmingson and I, when we first got on the board, when Lisa Dugan was the head of the department, and it was, generally speaking in county government, if you don't hear a lot of complaints, that organization's run very well. And speaking with staff there, it's not a good subject necessarily, Child Support Service, but you guys do an excellent job at it, so.
Thank you.
And I know Mr. Martin's been doing it for a long time, so. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. We move to the second. Any public comment on this item? Okay, Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, going on to item 10. And I guess we might as well do 10, 11, and 12, because they're all the same subject but different contracts.
Sure, what can I?
Director Blatnick.
How can I help?
Supervisor Gitlin, you pulled your items.
Yes, and I'm hoping I can get, my questions have to do, Mr. Blatnick, with regard to how we can find services that are more local, including reaching out for interstate contracts with Oregon, so that we don't have to put the people in need on these long ambulance rides of seven and eight hours down to Yuba City, or Butte County, or other places in between. You and I have had this communication before, that I'd like to know if your department can report back to the board on what outreach you can develop with having these services available either locally or within a shorter period of geography distance-wise. So, if you'd address that, I'd appreciate that.
Locally, there's no options. And there haven't been any options. I don't anticipate any options in the next decades. State of Oregon, we don't have any jurisdiction in the state of Oregon, so we cannot place anybody in the state of Oregon. We use all and every facility available that's suitable, depending on the individual. In Northern California, there have been occasions where, one child occasion, we actually even had to go further than that, because there was just nothing available. The mental health system has shrunk over the years. You heard earlier discussions about the regional center. Same thing is true with mental health. We are sort of the victims of our success by keeping people, providing alternatives for people rather than sending them to institutions. The business of institutions has shrunk. There are fewer today than there have ever been, and there'll probably be fewer next year and the year after. So, we're working very hard to find alternatives to institutional placements, to sending people seven hours away. We don't want to do this. This is why we come up with some creative ideas to find alternatives to putting someone, just locking someone off, because we can't find some local options. So, these programs that we create in our community are designed to deal with this issue. That's how we're dealing with it. Now, if we were going to even think about building a facility of some kind like this, it would be, first of all, millions and millions of dollars to construct, and then millions of dollars to operate. And they're not feasible anymore, because the clients are not there. And we have, in the scheme of things, small numbers. And so, because we have small numbers, we could never sustain a program locally. We would actually have to import people from other communities to keep the facility open. And so, you would really be putting yourself, I think, in a horrible position by even considering having some kind of operations like that.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yeah, and I, you know, I've got to thank Supervisor Gitlin for bringing this to our attention, because of your successes, because of the things you have done, has minimized the amount of usage that we have to do with these people that we contract with. You know, successes are phenomenal. I think we've gone leaps and bounds from where we were even four years ago, five years ago. We've done very well. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it.
I know, it's helped, I can see from the budget impact that we've saved a lot by setting these up, because I know five, six years ago, we, the budget part of this thing was over. And so, I know your staff's worked very diligently about trying to still be able to provide for these particular circumstances and people in the situation, but also try to keep their budget as best intact as possible. It's a tough, tough battle there.
It is very tough.
Okay.
Supervisor Gill.
Gary, just returning to this interstate option, which you seem to think is not viable, is there some kind of legislative intervention in Sacramento and in Salem that we can initiate on this level? We're a border community. I know we share services between our communities, separated by the state line, but is it a closed subject? Is there something we can do in Sacramento, and this board of supervisors can intervene at Salem level, where you have an option in Medford, which is, again, a three-hour drive as compared to seven, again, for your limited services, which you, can that be explored?
We actually have explored that, and it's not an option. There's two issues. One is getting both legislatures to agree about California having jurisdiction in another state. This has never happened before anywhere. The other issue will be that if we, we have to find a facility that's equal in quality or better than the California facility that we would be placing someone in. That is also an issue, that Oregon facilities historically have not met our standards of care. They're also designed in a very different way, so they actually don't provide the same type of services that California provides. So, all in all, we felt it was not in the best interest of our clients to send them to Oregon facilities, and we also felt it wasn't in the interest of the board of supervisors to begin what would be an arduous process of trying to even create some sort of jurisdiction in the state of Oregon. We would rather be able to find facilities within our neighborhood. We do use Humboldt County. Sometimes they do take our acute care patients, but we have a number of our long-term patients in Crestwood Matter in Humboldt County. And we use that facility as sort of our first-choice facility, if it's available and suitable for that person. And of course, we do have the shortage of facilities that's really more acute on the acute care side. That's the hospital short-term care. Those are the ones that are really an issue, that we just don't have locally.
Okay. At this point, I'm going to entertain, entertain a motion for items 10, 11, and 12.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any public comment on these three items on the agenda, which is item 10, 11, and 12 in the agenda? Okay, seeing no public comment, I am going to bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, at this point, we are going to go on to, we're going to go on to item 28, under General Government. This is the, we're near the, yeah, that's, we've got item, just for the, for the people listening, we've got item 28, 29, and 30 left on the agenda, and all other items have been dealt with. So, item 28, Process for Abating a Public Nuisance in History of Code Enforcement Division as Required by Deputy Director Building, Planning, and Code, Code Enforcement Officer 3, Mr. Mason. And I'm going to start off with, I do owe an apology to Deputy Director Constable and Officer Mason, and it wasn't fair to direct the comments to the two of you on the work you did on the Walmart project, so I apologize. So, Mr. Mason.
Thank you, Chair, supervisors. At the last meeting, Supervisor Finnegan asked some questions about the process for abating nuisances and the difference between addressing those on public property versus private property. And it's a little more complicated than it would seem, mainly because the policy manual for code enforcement for private properties, our county policy, that's about 25 pages. The administrative policy manual's 128 pages. The code enforcement manual, published by KCO, is about inch and a half thick, and there's an entire library of codes, state, federal, and local that go along with that. So, I appreciate the board's patience in taking this time to put together and try and condense it as much as I could, so it would be in a straightforward and understandable manner. And I think if we just go straight to the flow chart, Exhibit 1A, it'll be real clear here, real quick. So, we start off with, "The complaint is received or conditions are observed." And of course, complaints can come from the board, they can come from citizens, they can come from other agencies. First step is to identify the property owner, whether it's public or private. If it's private, we go to the different, go to the next flow chart, and I'll go over that one as well. If it's public, we identify the agency that's responsible for the maintenance, whether it's Fish and Game, or U.S. Forest Service, or county, or whoever. If it's county-controlled, we go down further. But if it's non-county, we refer it to the agency that has jurisdiction. And if it's a major issue, then it can come back to the board for an official request for action. So, if there's some major issue in the forest, then it'd be appropriate for the board to take action and request official assistance with something of a major nature. If it's just a bag of garbage or whatever, we call the park ranger and say, "Hey, you got some stuff," and they take care of it. Excuse me, so if it's county property, next step is identify the division that's responsible for the maintenance. So, if it's the launch ramp, parks and rec, if it's a drainage ditch, it goes to roads, if it's out at the airport, the airport guys take care of it. And we notice that division. So, if it's a non-maintained road or paper street, then it comes to me. If it's an unimproved parcel that's not a recreational facility, that's under parks and recs, then it comes to our department. And the first step is to prioritize reviews with a department head, and currently, we don't have a department head, so that's with the deputy department head hiding. And we go over, what are the issues? Who's complaining? How bad is it? What's the proper response? So, for a low priority, it's addressed when time and resources are available. For a normal priority, it's okay. What funding do we have, and is it appropriate to use it on this, and put it in the normal rotation, and we'll get to it, and we get to it. If it's a higher priority, we use existing funds or apply to the board supervisors for additional funds. So, in the case of the Walmart project, it was Supervisor Gitlin asked the board to direct staff to prepare the report and identify the funds. And in my 20-plus years of experience, these types of projects sometimes go much further than you anticipate, because you grab a hold of a piece of trash, and you start pulling on it, it just gets bigger and bigger. And so, our original estimate was maybe a dumpster, but to be on the safe side, let's make sure we have extra. And so, we identified that in the board report. And fortunately, it wasn't needed. Volunteer funds more than covered all of it, and so, but we had that safety factor in our report.
Dave, if I could interrupt you for just a minute, I don't want to lose your train of thought, but now, this particular property, just using this so that we can follow this flow chart as an example.
Uh-huh.
When you identified the division responsible for this particular piece of property, this was drainage, county drainage?
Well, it's an unimproved parcel with a drainage ditch in it.
Okay.
And so, the actual, the actual trash wasn't obstructing the drainage yet. If it had been clogging the culvert and causing it to back up, then it would have gone to roads. But because it was up on the banks still and hadn't gotten down to the part that they actually maintain, they came back to us to find alternative methods of addressing the problem.
Okay.
So, yeah, we had that discussion with Mr. Daniels and Tina, and we figured that out in the department, who was best suited to deal with and handle the situation. So, that's, that's how it works. I've had cases where there's been a paper street that had a bunch of trash, and the neighbor said, "Hey, we want to clean it up, can you help?" And we went through the same process. We got the release of liability. We had some grant funds for a dumpster. We used the grants funds for the dumpster. The neighbors put the trash in, it went away, everybody was happy.
We don't do paper streets, because they're not county-owned.
Right. So, but the purpose of that particular grant was to clean up those specific types of areas, where it's publicly-owned property, it doesn't have a natural or normal maintenance process in place, where it's just building up, piling up, an illegal dump site. In fact, that's what's called Illegal Dump Site Disposal Grant. Going to Exhibit 1B, the difference. So, again, we have complaint received, condition observed, identify and prioritize. So, a case is outside jurisdiction of the county, we refer to the appropriate agency. So, if it's in the city, or it's on the tribal land, or it's not inside the county boundaries, whatever, it goes to that agency that's responsible for it, and then the case is closed, because there's nothing I can do with it. If it's in our jurisdiction, inspection and research, and research includes identifying the chain of title, who owns it, whether or not there's liens, who the lien holders are, all that stuff, and what's the most appropriate method of obtaining compliance, because that's the ultimate goal. So, it's written in verbal notification. Verbal warnings and immediate compliance, which is about 70% of them. Verbal warnings and immediate compliance, which is about 70% of them, you just ask, and people clean up. Oh, I didn't know. And they just take care of it. Those are the fun ones, really, they are, because you get compliance right away, and it's not a whole lot of effort. The others? Written notice. What are the violations? What needs to be done? What kind of timeframe? So if we get compliance within the established timeframe, case is closed, we move on to the next one. Substantial compliance, they need a little more time, we give them a little more time. I've got cases that have dragged on for, I think the longest one I've had was two years, but they cleaned it all up themselves, and I didn't have to spend a dime. All I had to do was give them more time, and give them more time. But I give it to them in small chunks, so that they maintain the motivation, because if progress stops or goes backwards, they go back right back to the enforcement process. And for some people, that's what's necessary to get compliance. For the ones where there's no compliance, the case is scheduled for public nuisance hearing before our hearing officer. We have the hearing, and he has three choices essentially that he can make. He can say, there's no nuisance, it's dismissed, we're done. Or he can say, you know, there is a nuisance, but if you had more time, you could do it yourself. And this is the same as the one where I give extension, but it has a bit more weight, because he's got the hammer of justice literally in his hand. And some people just need that extra motivation to step up and clean up their own mess. And then, of course, the one where the nuisance is confirmed, and we're authorized to proceed with the abatement. That's the least favored method. We try not to go there. Sometimes it's the only option to get compliance. And when that happens, I have to balance the available funds to the project, and whether or not we have enough to do it, because it's really frustrating to get an abatement order and you don't have enough to do it, and then you have to go back and start the whole process over when you do get the funding.
Mr. Mason, one thing that, and I know you're jumping to Exhibit 2, so I'll go ahead and jump you there on the report, but one of the things that's changed since 2009 is you guys now have a public hearing officer that the county hired. Prior to that, I mean, I think you were on almost every other agenda with a nuisance abatement thing. So unfortunate thing that the public hearing officer isn't televised when you guys do the nuisance abatement hearing, which our board meetings are televised. But if I remember right, we found it a lot more effective to have a public hearing officer, and you could deal with it in a quicker way also.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
But we, you, I think you had something on almost every single agenda, at least when Supervisor Hemmingsen and I first got on the board. And so that's been one noticeable change. That's why since 2009, a lot of the work you do has not necessarily been publicly recognized. But there, the county continues and has since, since, was it 2002, 2003, where we hired a code enforcement officer, which was Stokes before you were hired? But anyway, I'm sorry, that's, I thought it was worth pointing out that the county's been dealing with this on an ongoing basis for over a decade.
Yeah, well, the hearing officer has expedited the process substantially, because we have the hearings are set once a month on Friday at 1:00, and we take them in the order, whatever the hearing officer, and as I tell people, he's the independent hearing officer, he's not the David Mason's puppet-on-a-string hearing officer. What he decides is what he decides. What he continues, he continues. I have no control over his decisions whatsoever. He's a third independent party, he doesn't have a dog in the fight, he's totally partial and completely fair, and with years and years and years of experience as an attorney. So, and he's very, very fair, and sometimes people need to get hammered, and they get hammered, and sometimes they need a little more time, and they need to get some more time. And I'm very pleased with our results with the hearing officer. Just to tie in on that, I have some stats that actually aren't in your report, just in case there were some questions that came up. In fiscal year 10, 11, we had four cases go to the hearing officer. In 11, 12, we had 23 cases go to the hearing officer. And then just last fiscal year, we had 12 cases go to the hearing officer. Part of that was because of the grant funding. We had additional funds to handle some that had just been on the to-be-done-later list that had just been sitting there for a while that needed to be done, and we had the money, and so we pushed it forward. So, just getting into Exhibit 2 with the history, as I say, the ordinance was adopted in 1997. And the board supervisors was the hearing body. We had the 99, the definition of the nuisance. And, you know, it's funny, but everybody talks about the blight officer this, and the blight officer that. Blight is just one of many, many things that can be a public nuisance. So nuisance officer, I'm the enforcement officer. So anyways, and I said, I came on board January 2005, and then '06, we had the administrative citations, hearing officer in '09, and then, of course, the grant 2011.
But I do think it's, you know, you kind of glazed over it a little bit, but the board did, and this is before myself and Supervisor Hemmingsen were on the board also, is there was a reorganization of community development department that basically created a code enforcement division within it.
Yeah.
And I think it is important, because even back then, it's, getting the community cleaned up was a priority.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, and I serve on the Board of Directors for KCO, the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers, and we see this all over, not just California, but nationwide. Communities are beginning to realize that code enforcement is not just telling somebody to sweep off their front porch. It is vital to the health of the community, and without it, you're fighting an uphill struggle. And like I tell my friends at the Sheriff's Department, do you want to be the Vicks NyQuil that makes people feel better, or you want to be the penicillin that cures the disease? Because code enforcement is penicillin, we're not NyQuil. We don't make people feel better, oh, we put so many people in jail, and they turn around and come back out. It's like, no, you address the problem. Cracks me up. I watch shows on TV where, you know, some cops or whatever, yeah, we just saw a car leave a known drug house, and we're going to pull him over. Well, if it's a known drug house, why don't you go back to the house where the drugs are? It just baffles me. So we've shut down a substantial number of drug houses in Del Norte, working with sheriff, high patrol, and city police. Let me just go on to Exhibit 3 and get into some of the stats. We have a table there broken down by year, complaints received and observed. You'll see there's a slight drop in 10 and 11, 12. That's because the grant funding enables us to go after the major cases, which burn up tons of time, as opposed to prior years where the focus is on what we could afford to do, which was the smaller stuff. But generates more numbers, but it's more smaller stuff. So we see that dip. And in 11, 12, we had a change in contracts of the vehicle abatement, so for several months, we didn't have a tow company, that kind of slowed us down a little bit. But we're picking back up, we're back up to speed. So just go over some of the major accomplishments for code enforcement division. In 2005, we had two cases of felony timber theft, we recovered $13,000 from the mill, where the stolen trees went. They were harvested out of the county right away without permission. We had major felonies, prosecutions, and convictions. Had a person out at Dead Lake who was running their own hazardous waste dump, taking in hazardous waste and just chucking it on the banks of the lake. Got the grant funding from Integrated Waste Management Board, now CalRecycle, for $500,000 to clean up Union Street. We took out over 200 cars and over 150 tons of crap. So that was a major, major cleanup. Same deal, same people up in Jawbone, it's another property where they had made a huge mess, and we got that cleaned up.
Did we ever find out where those tires came from?
They came from somebody who's now deceased, so I'd rather not speak ill of the dead, but that isn't going to happen again. And the other tire shop owners are well aware of the penalties of what happens if you send a tire to the wrong place.
If I saw a truck just the other day that was loaded with tires, and it was like baby metal. Where are those coming from?
So what people fail to realize is that a television set, a computer monitor, a bucket of motor oil, a can of paint, has eight scrap junk tires, hazardous waste, and to send it to any place other than a permitted facility is punishable as a felony of $10,000 and one to three in a state penitentiary for each item you send. So it's not, to prosecute those, you need a lot of evidence, but we've done it several times, and there's people in San Quentin right now for doing that. So we do do that. The drug houses, I just put the names of the streets, because the houses have been cleaned up, and decent citizens are living in most of the houses, rather than give the addresses. Don't want to embarrass the community, but the people live there, they know where they were. Riverside Drive, Parkway, Tsunami, Muncie, Union Street, French Hill, Little Jones, Colton, Dundas, Roy, Clamath, the list goes on and on. And these, everything from marijuana grow operations to houses that are providing, selling, distributing narcotics. Had one on railroad, I think there were some 20-plus arrests and a substantial amount of heroin that was recovered from that property. And it's no longer there. There's a brand-new house on the lot where that drug house used to be, after we got the nitwits out, and we had it demolished within three days because the owner didn't want to be prosecuted for allowing a drug house, because that's a crime. So it's working. Again, we had the grant from CalRecycle, we had 12 properties, nine 40-yard debris full of trash removed from public lands. That's a substantial amount of trash picked up and hauled off. The reason it was $78,000 is because we got the tail end that nobody else wanted. The rest of the community said, that's not enough money to do anything. They didn't want it. I said, I'll take whatever you got, I'll make it go, because I'll take whatever I've got and stretch it just as far as I possibly can. Again, we've dressed over 1,775 abandoned vehicles. A lot of those, once people receive the notice, they take care of it themselves. When I first started, the price of scrap was down, and we had to tow quite a few cars. The price of scrap went up, people started voluntarily taking their cars, to scrap them out, because it was worthwhile. Because when I started, it cost $50 to get rid of a junk car. And now you can sell your junk car, or get rid of it for free. So that's helped. I attended a training at the High Patrol Academy in Sacramento for vehicle abatement. We had an order with all the vehicle abatement programs, sent a representative, we're going over the procedure, the policy set by the state. And a comment was made by the captain that Del Norte was one of the few counties that was following the program the way it was intended. Our final report on the disposal site grant program. Again, list of the properties that we cleaned up. We got some signs for posting properties, bumper stickers for public awareness, used it to get rid of some travel trailers that were packed full of trash. We stretched it just as far as we could possibly stretch it. There's a site map that shows you where the sites were, copies of the bumper stickers. I have some left over if anybody wants any, and our substandard signs. The next page is the chart table. I need to point out, where it says, you know, there's debris boxes and pounds of trash, where that's separated out, it's because those are two separate items. The debris boxes went at the debris box price, and other items went across the scales by themselves, and some of that was travel trailers that were packed full of trash, and the whole thing just got crushed into the landfill. So you'll see some, like, there's one where it says 52,760 pounds of trash and 14 tires. It's like, well, now that went in county dump trucks, which is why that's separated Anyways, so that's kind of self-explanatory. On our expenditures, I think the most telling thing is the unspent funds. We used all but $101.83.
That's 17,000.
Well, no. We used all but $101.83. We have 17.
I see. I'm sorry.
We have, that's liens that haven't been paid back yet. And when we got down to the grant, we were pinching and scraping and trying, is there some way we can use this money, because I don't want to give any of it back? This money comes from a, from the tipping fees across the state. Every waste disposal site collects fees, and it goes into the fund of the state that funds this grant program. And with the concept being, it's much like the school tax, everybody benefits from having the children go to school, even though you don't have kids, everybody pays for schools. Everybody that has trash pays for trash cleanup, because everybody benefits from it. And unlike the school tax, it's not limited to where you live or what your property taxes, it's collected to the state, and then it's distributed through the grant program to whoever needs it. Anyways, our lien recoveries, we've already repaid, and let me clarify, on this grant money, we only have to repay it if we collect it in cost recovery. If it's on public lands, or the lien isn't paid, we'd never have to give it to CalRecycle. So on the amount, we've been able to recover $50,162.74 we've already collected and returned to the state. We have $17,752.37 that is on the liens, and it's automatic, because the lien is set up, that as soon as it's paid, it's, they get their money, but they don't take any further action on it, because they're listed as a beneficiary in the lien. There's another number that I have for you that's not in the report. We estimated that since January 2005, I've spent roughly $116,000 of general funds. And to date, I have recovered $124,759.23, roughly almost $10,000 more than what I've spent. So not only do I stretch it as far as it'll go, I try to get it back after it's been stretched.
Are you including staff time in that too, or no?
What's that?
Including staff time on that?
No.
Okay, okay.
To try and break that down, would burn up too much staff time to try and line item it out as to what it is. But these are liens that are paid, money that's recovered. I had one major case where the lab had evidence, and they broke the chain of evidence, and we billed them for our time, and they just wrote the check for $7,000. They didn't even argue, they knew it was all totally their fault, and they just wrote the county a check, paid for the time. So that's pretty much my report, unless you have any questions. Supervisor Gitlin.
Code Officer Mason and Heidi Constal, you know, words are going to come up short here. I just can't tell you how much I appreciate all you've done. And I'm going to continue to say that, since I've been sworn into the board. You know, I feel like one of your deputies. I have pictures. You know, the county shouldn't have given me this iPad, because it has a photo attachment. And you know, Mr. Mason, I am continually sending you photos of blighted objects and blighted pictures. I'm another set of eyes and ears, and I really like that job. So I, in a sense, I'm one of your deputies. But I can't tell you how pleased I am at how you have embraced my vision of cleaning up Del Norte County. And if we refer only to the county-owned property, I don't like to call it the Walmart property, because it's not Walmart's, it's the county-owned property at Washington Boulevard, that on the bottom of that ditch area was a kind of foul sewage that I can't even begin to describe, and it was flowing into the water system, Elk River Tributary, and going to points unknown. And we have cleaned that up, or I should say, the volunteers cleaned that up, and your Boy Scout troop 1077 cleaned that up. And most definitely, anyone would agree, it's a priority. And there are other spots that are besmirching this beautiful place we all call Del Norte County where we live. So again, I won't keep singing, selling, and telling you the excellent work you do. I think it's exemplary. Keep up the good work. And again, anything I can do to help you along in that process, you have only to call on me. Thank you.
Supervisor McClure.
I want to thank you for your good work, and I know that since 1996, when we started on this project, we have done remarkable things in our community. But I was out at Pacific Shores, because I wasn't sure about the lady that had the surveillance camera signs, and so I wanted to go out there. And it was cleaner than it's been in years. But down towards the end of the On Your Way to the Boat launch, are the old trailers that have been pulled out, are those slated to go to demolition? Or do you know who has, who's in charge of those? Because I think, I mean, whatever cleanup happened, they all got towed there, and the cleanup was in the, where there was an old kind of encampment.
There was a cleanup that was funded by a state grant, I think the Smith River Conservancy, where somebody got in on that. And I'm pretty sure that they didn't leave anything behind. If somebody's piled up trailers, this is the first I've heard of it.
They're there.
So I'll make a trip out there, take a look, and see if that's something that I can address.
As you're going down to the old home site.
And we're in a new fiscal year, which means I have $23,000 from the state for vehicle abatement.
Well, I know that Snoozy was going out there for a while, because the weights were, you know, the scrap metal.
You know, the fire department had some issues with people that were taking vehicles out there, burning them.
Burning them, and then taking them for sale.
It's like, I don't know who burned it, I just committed to, for over a decade, to blight abatement, so it's not a new thing.
I just committed to, for over a decade, to blight abatement, so it's not a new thing. Since you're headed out to Gaski at some point, too, before you get to the bridges on the right, there's a guy with a trailer and some stuff under tarp there. I don't know if, I had about three or four constituents...
And a pickup truck.
And a pickup truck.
Yeah, yeah. I, I have a report from the Highway Patrol on that. Already, it's on my to-do list.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, thanks for the presentation. We are going to go to item twenty-nine legislative miscellaneous, consider miscellaneous legislative budget matters pertinent to the county of Del Norte. Authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending for the state or federal governments. And we've got a guest speaker today, too.
I think we're going to bypass any alleged comments I have because we don't have any letters today for the board, so we would go straight to having Greg Burns of Vance Goick, our advocate in Washington, D.C., to give a short presentation. And I know he's meeting with all the board members, and he's very eloquent, so we'll listen to him now.
Greg, yeah. Found the razor.
And I thought you were a hit.
You know, well, no comment, really. Hey, Greg, just to begin with, and for people, I know Supervisor Finnegan and I and C.A.O. Serena, we were back there in April, you know, pushing a lot of local county issues at the federal level. And I want to thank you for setting, I think, we have nineteen meetings in two days. We were, we were pretty ragged by the end of that, but thank you for setting those up and getting face-to-face time with some congressional reps as well as, as chief staffers. So, thanks for your work on that.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And I think, you know, I mean, as you all saw, the importance of, of an annual trip is, is really key. I'd like for all of you, at some point, to have the opportunity to come back and experience it. Supervisor Finnegan has probably done the most over the period that we've been working on your behalf. Supervisor Sullivan, this was maybe your first trip in a while.
Second.
In a while.
Yeah, in a long time.
I know you've done one prior to engaging with our firm. But I think, you know, we did, we had, you know, seventeen or nineteen or whatever meetings over, over two days. It was pretty exhausting for all of us. I know County Administrator Serena's feet were much worse for the wear after we returned. So, next time, he'll have to bring some thicker socks or something. But having said all that, you know, we can, you know, having that annual trip is really great and really important because people need to see you, and they need to hear from you personally, and it helps us really engage in a lot of topics. So, since then, we've been trying to really follow up on some of the things that we did talk about there. You recall that a lot of our time was spent on federal forest management issues and also the airport, to highlight two things. So, there are two updates I'd like to provide you since your trip. One, start with secure rural schools and just general conversation about forest management as a whole. There continues to be a lot of conversation regarding these issues. There was a very recent hearing on the Senate side in particular where, where I think they take a more, well, they take an approach on the Senate side, I think, that has more chance of becoming law than anything that they probably do on the House side right now with regard to this issue. And the Senate side has been talking very clearly in, about how, you know, frankly, NEPA, in this case, National Environmental Policy Act, is, is holding back the Forest Service from managing the forests in a way that they would probably like to. Now, that's not necessarily the case here locally, I'm not saying that it is, but from a national perspective, from Tom Tidwell, the Director of the Forest Service perspective, you know, he is being forced to respond on a daily basis to threats of litigation or actual litigation. They, they, people file suit against actions that the Forest Service would like to take, and that forces the Forest Service to basically retrench and become more conservative and do less. Because if they do less, they end up having fewer lawsuits. So, that's what's happened. And that's the kind of give and take that we've had. So, the Forest Service has really tried to urge Congress to give more clear direction through a rewrite of NEPA, specifically with regard to their issues. So, NEPA was, I think, first developed in the seventies, I believe, and really hasn't been touched at all since then. So, it makes sense for Congress to think about it and try to come up with a process that at least is a little bit more workable, allows things to go through that still are not hopefully damaging to the environment in any significant way, and do provide people an opportunity to, to litigate if they feel that it's necessary. But, you know, at least would still provide some opportunity to do something, which, you know, you all know very well, the Forest Service is not doing much. So, you know, that, that conversation continues, and that's one that we're very much engaged in on your behalf, you know, on a weekly basis. And then with regard to the more immediate concern of secure rural schools, we're here in July. The fiscal year ends in September. We are without a secure rural schools reauthorization, and yet the fiscal year is almost over. I firmly believe that we will have another reauthorization of SRS. It will probably be a one-year reauthorization, which means that it'll go through this fiscal year. It almost certainly will be less money than you had the prior year because that's been the trend. But the biggest challenge with, with rewriting this legislation is finding money for it. You have to pay for it some way. And you'd think, well, that's easy. It's only, you know, it's a three-hundred-and-some-million-dollar program now. It's pretty darn small, actually. But it's still a challenge. Recently, there's been some conversation about the fact that the United States government actually has a helium reserve that has, actually, it's worth quite a bit of money now. And there is an artificial shortage of helium because we hold, hold most of the reserves, and, you know...
Case those dirigibles ever come back.
We just simply have them. So, Congress is now saying we should sell this helium because we no longer need it. It's not really a strategic priority. I mean, at some point, it may have been relevant for defense purposes or something. It's clearly not anymore. So, Senator Wyden in particular, from Oregon, who's very much engaged in these issues because he's Chair of the relevant committee, has been pushing this as an idea. We sell the helium, we tie the proceeds to, you know, forest payments, and we move on. And, and that's, I think, the approach that will end up winning the day. So, I believe that will happen. It's very, you know, when I found this out about the whole helium thing, it was very surprising to me. So, I'm, I'm not surprised if you all are equally as shocked. You know, regarding the airport, moving on to another issue, you all are obviously entering a critical stage. I've talked about this issue with some of you all. You know, the, the fiscal year is ending. There's a real goal to try to get some funding from the FAA to help with the terminal improvements and, you know, roadway reconstructions and things like that, as well as the RSA, runway safety improvement area projects. We need to get that funding before the end of the fiscal year, but then the, the airport needs to get the proper permits that it needs from various state agencies. So, you know, hopefully, these, as these paths collide, we will be able to sneak in under the radar and get some funding. I have been talking about this issue a little bit over the past day or so with, with some of you, and we do have a path forward. We're going to try to get some letters from some of the state permitting agencies to the FAA to state that there is progress being made. We then, I will take that to the Congressman Huffman's office and ask that they support that effort through their channels, and I think we'll be able to, to hopefully, you know, get the money that you all need in this fiscal year before funds get a little bit more competitive for other reasons, for other things that are going on in the state, basically, next year.
Greg, I would encourage you on both, both for, I would contact Lamoffa's office as well as DeFazio's, too, because it's part of his regional airport as well.
That's a good point, DeFazio. And you remember, we met with his staff about this issue in particular, so that's a very good point. I'm actually, and also, just so you all know, I, I am going to meet with Jim Bernard after I leave here, so I'll be able to catch up with him and, and get his perspective on where things are. And then another issue that we, we really didn't talk about during your trip, but I do want to highlight because I think it's a really good indicator of sort of where things are in Congress these days, that's still relevant to you all, is funding for a program that you all know well, community development block grants. So, you all get a lot of funding from the federal government on an annual basis to provide social services and other things like that. CDBG is the acronym. That's another important program for you all on an annual basis from which you rely on funding. So, to give you some historical perspective, in fiscal year two thousand and eleven, Congress appropriated roughly four billion dollars for that program. In the fiscal year fourteen, which is beginning October one appropriations bill, sort of the proposal for next year, the administration proposed roughly two-point-seven billion. The House actually proposed one-point-six billion, which is a, obviously, a very significant cut. Now, the Senate, thankfully, a lot of times, they play off of each other, so there is some of that going on here. But the Senate, thankfully, is, is nearly at three-point-two billion, which is more than the administration proposed. So, you know, I tell you this, just again, to highlight the sort of vast differences that these two bodies are sort of working on. You know, they're just very different paths. And I'm not saying one is right or one's wrong, you know, but at the same time, they are very divergent. It does make governing very difficult.
Well, I think the other thing I'd put out to, to, to point out to the local community also, CDBG is not just social services. CDBG is what got the harbor rebuilt. I mean, we, we put, I think it was from the counties, five million dollars of funding from CDBG to help meet their match. So, without the CDBG money, the harbor is not getting rebuilt right now.
That's true.
So, I think that's it, and that's a big economic development driver.
Absolutely. So, obviously, it's critical, and we are working very hard to ensure that, you know, your delegation and folks that, that you work with understand the importance of the program and, and understand that a one-point-six-billion-dollar figure is really just not sustainable. It doesn't make any sense. We've seen that, that, I just saw a study the other day where it talked about how one of the main drivers of our recent recession and the ongoing sort of effects from it were not private sector job losses, but actually public sector job losses, and all the cutting that everybody's been doing at the local level. But this type of a cut, where the funds from the federal government go directly to locals, aren't really messed with in any way by the feds. They aren't, you know, it's not a difficult administration. You all have a lot of freedom to do things like, for instance, the harbor. Those funds are absolutely critical in this time when local government has retracted so much and really is just about to be able to start to, you know, get back on its feet and hopefully boost our, you know, economic recovery. They can't make these kinds of cuts and, and allow you all to have the kind of recovery that you need for the community. So, again, I, I use that just as an example of kind of the conversations going on in Washington. There are still a lot of opportunities. You do have a new delegation, Congressman Lamoffa, you've already mentioned, as well as Congressman Huffman. I think both of them are very eager to be helpful to the community. You also, again, have DeFazio on particular issues. He's just been named the ranking member on the House Natural Resources Committee, which is also a very big thing. So, you've got two Oregonians that, that now run those committees in the House and the Senate. Well, DeFazio's ranking member, but still. Doc Hastings is the chairman. He's only from Washington. I think he had an opportunity to meet with his staff while you were in Washington as well. So, point being, your delegation is well-placed. They're eager. We're getting Huffman and Lamoffa up to speed. Lamoffa, obviously, is much more familiar with your area and your concerns probably than Huffman has been. But I can say that Huffman is very much engaged and eager to work hard on your behalf. He really wants to, to find a couple of issues that he can work on, and I think we've teed him up with, you know, management of forests and the airport, and I think he's ready to go. So, and of course, your senators continue to be engaged on, on issues that are, you know, key for them. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here and see you all.
Okay, questions from Supervisors. Supervisor Gill. Just a comment, Greg. We met and chatted in our office, and I, I'm, I'm sure you heard some of the things that I'm passionate about, and I'm, I'm convinced we have the right person. I, I don't like that word lobbyist. It has a, I hear, hear it used, and it has so many negative connotations, so I'm, I'm going to call you an advocate. Whenever I see you, it's our advocate, Greg, in Washington. And I hope to come back to D.C. with my wife soon and visit with you and get an idea of what the rest of the world, the rest of the country thinks of Del Norte County.
Supervisor Hemmingsen looked a little more like a lobbyist yesterday. Getting back to the SRS stuff, you know, they keep, they keep lowering those funds like they can wean us off of this, like we can replace those funds someplace else, and we can't. And they keep taking away and taking away. They take, they keep acquiring more land, you know, and, and taking away the forest harvesting opportunities, you know. And I understand that, you know, when you're speaking with the Forest Service and their restraints, you know, and the lawsuits and that type of thing. But there, there needs to be some emphasis put on the fact that we have nowhere, we have no place to replace those funds and the SRS. And they think they can just slowly wean us off of those like that's going to be some sort of fix, and, and it's not. I mean, we're going to be without those funds. We're going to have to, somewhere, we're going to have to cut services somewhere, either whether that's employees or, or, you know, actual services themselves. Somewhere, we're going to have to cut them because the money's not going to be there.
You know, and, and I completely agree with you, and I think frankly that it's a much broader perspective than just forest issues. It's really a conversation about what, how is, you know, the nation going to deal with these rural communities? And we talked a lot about that when you were back in Washington. You know, we need to have a holistic conversation about the plight of rural America, and we're not. We're not at all. I mean, you can look, Commissioner McClure, or Supervisor McClure, I'm sorry. You can look just to the conversation that we had yesterday about Sutter Hospital issues. And that's a perfect example, I think, that's, that's very similar, even though obviously very different issues. But you've got perceived impacts from a piece of federal legislation that are, you know, absolutely impacting the way that healthcare is provided in the community. And is anybody talking about this? Is anybody thinking, you know, as we continue to pass laws and do things, how are we really helping our constituents in rural America? And I don't think that there's that holistic conversation going on at all. Frankly, I think it's a really challenging conversation. No one has any answers, but we need to keep driving it, and I think your point is well taken.
And, and, and I agree with you. You know, I assume you were alluding to the Affordable Care Act. If that, you know, and that seems to be the fear of our hospital, is that that's going to increase their costs considerably, or maybe lessen their reimbursement. However it ends up, they're going to lose money. That's what their perception of this is. Now, if, if that's going to happen in, in rural communities, the Affordable Care Act is not going to be so affordable because we're not going to be able to have the facilities to treat anybody. So, somebody, you'd think somebody would have thought this out a little bit better.
Well, I will, let me, let me have one retort to what you just said, though.
Sure.
That is that hospitals were a major driver behind, the whole idea behind the Affordable Care Act. Because their big costs, one of their bigs on costs is care for the uninsured, which they bear the, the total cost on. So, now that everybody theoretically should have insurance at some point in the future, twenty-fifteen or whatever it's going to be now, they should be off the hook for those, those costs. So, if they're telling you that, you know, certain things are happening...
That's what they're telling.
You've got to start challenging them on some of those comments, but that's a story for another day.
Supervisor McClure.
And I'm sure you do. I'm sorry.
And that's my point. I mean, that's my point. If that's their fear, if that's what they're using as a basis...
But it may just be rhetoric from their perspective, frankly.
And it's also tied to the reimbursement rates, because those are going to be adjusted in different ways.
Right.
And so, it's the reimbursement rates that I think have them on the run. But I also think that when you look at, like, for instance, this rural hospital, because we are in, and many rural hospitals like us, because we are in a low-income area, we only have five percent indigent care here. It was a little over five, of their own status. So, they're not giving service for free compared to what you may be doing if you were in a urban area. They may have a higher indigent care. That Berkeley is demanding that Sutter show them what their indigent care is. So, we do need to kind of hold them.
Well, California is an example of a state where they're very progressive with regard to providing care above and beyond Medicare or Medicaid. Texas, on the other hand, is a perfect example of a state that is the exact opposite. They provide very little in terms of healthcare. Their indigent healthcare, or their hospitals cover a much higher proportion of indigent care.
Indigent care, yeah.
So, I mean, anyway, this is completely off-topic, but the point is, I think this is another example of just the ongoing conversation that we need to have in Washington about how federal policies impact local communities.
Well, and just to kind of dovetail with everyone, one with, with Supervisor Hemmingsen's, the Forest Services and I, we, I attended the Sustainable Forest Coalition that's in California that Supervisor Hemmingsen sits on, and, and there, just the gap between what happens locally and what the, what the heads are saying in D.C., there is no communication, and there seems to be, quite frankly, too much independence at the local level in terms of how they address the, the community. So, I agree with Supervisor Hemmingsen. I think in our scenario, with seventy-eight percent publicly-owned land, with most of it owned by the feds, that, you know, you can't wean us off of that because we have you know, you can't wean us off of that because we have nothing to transition into because of the land base. I, I think that's an ongoing problem. So I think there is a responsibility. And unfortunately, two areas that hit us hard on that SRS is the schools get hammered in the process because that's half of the money, or over half the money, and the roads do. So when people are upset about potholes or, or roads not getting fixed, I mean, at some point, that's going to come back to where's the funding coming from. And our biggest owner of land in the community happens to be the federal government. So I think there is an obligation to, to pay for some of those things. I, on another note, on the Affordable Care Act, I cannot seem, no one seems to have a handle on what this thing is going to look like. It's a big ugly train coming down the station and nobody knows what it's going to be when it arrives. Because you talk to, I've talked to heads of, of social services in other counties, and some people are excited about it because they get to change healthcare and then other people are scared about it. One of the things, though, at the congressional level, that I've had a couple of conversations on the Republican side of the aisle, is they, I've seen recently, and maybe you can give us an update as to where things are at in terms of the implementation of law, because it looks like the administration right now is picking and choosing what parts they will actually implement next year. Because the major employer part, from what I understand, the mandate of providing insurance has been pushed back. And now I'm here, the individual mandate may be pushed back. So where, I mean, it has the impression of something that, because it's the only piece of healthcare legislation, I believe, in the history, modern day history, that hasn't been amended since it was passed. There's a good chance, and I'm not speaking for the board as a whole, but I, it may implode. So I, I don't know what, what, what the current status is, is to where that's at. But if you keep delaying parts of the implementation, at what point does the law become the law, I guess?
You know, I mean, obviously, it's a hard question to answer succinctly in a short period of time.
Sure.
But I think that, very shortly, I think it will continue to be implemented. I don't think it's going to implode. I think it's, you know, obviously, it's a signature item. So it's going to, it's going to move forward. You're right that the, the mandate regarding employers was delayed for a year. There has been some conversation about how, how that impacts the individual mandate. Because how do you know if somebody needs to get insurance? Because we don't have the information from the employers to say whether they have it through their employer. So there's, there's some loopholes that are almost created because of that. So I think in general, things have been pushed back along these lines for a year. Other parts of the law are being implemented. I mean, not that I'm trying to defend it, but there have been some, some cost savings, some, some checks actually that, that regular people receive due to apparently overcharged premiums. So I'm certainly not an expert in this issue. I absolutely can see the good and the bad. And I think it will be implemented.
New York State residents have seen a 50% decrease in their premium costs.
Yeah, and I, I don't know all the, I mean.
And kids aren't getting kicked off.
It's hard to know, too, because each side has so much rhetoric on the issue.
Well, like you said, you can't get to it succinctly. And I do think it's, we appreciate the updates on the letters you guys do send out, giving us an update on what things are being dealt with in Congress at this particular moment in time. And I will reiterate what you said earlier. I think that the, we learned a lot of stuff when Supervisor Finnegan and CAO Serena and I were back in DC in regards to the airport and in terms of tapping different pools of money on the FAA. Those were things we didn't really know. And so by having that, that on the ground, feet on the ground, so to speak, especially with you setting up all these meetings, I think it was instrumental in terms of actually getting things done. So I know prior to, well, prior to 2000, I remember which year we, we hired your services. Was it 2005 or '06?
Around five or six.
Yeah.
I'm not exactly sure.
Well, we've been dealing with you directly since. But I, that, I, I know you were instrumental in helping get the harbor dredged. We greatly appreciate that. That's a multimillion dollar project that was done. So I, as big at part as the federal government is in Del Norte County, we have to have that, that relationship and have somebody there. Because, you know, they're not listening to us otherwise. So I, I appreciate your work you guys do. And, and, and any other Supervisors have anything to?
Well, I want to tell you that I appreciate the work also and want to publicly thank you for helping some constituents from my district have a wonderful visit during the inauguration. Thank you.
You're welcome. Glad to have the opportunity.
Yeah, it was pretty cool.
Yes, thank you. It's nice to see you all cleaned up.
Guys are a rough crowd.
All right. Okay, thanks, thanks, Greg. That's okay. Okay, so at this point, we have one item left on the agenda. Nope, there's one item, item 20.
Thirty.
Thirty. Department of Finance notification of 13, 2013-14 suspended mandates.
I'll make it real quick. Yeah, I put this on the agenda just so you, all the board understands that these mandates that by law were originally put in there and were to be reimbursed by the state of California are suspended. And that results in a loss of funding to local jurisdictions, approximately $27,000 in 1112. You know, the open meeting law had already been suspended. That's a considerable amount. But this is what we're seeing. And there's 50 of them on here. And if we're eligible from them, for them, we won't be reimbursed. So, you know, basically what we've been told is, well, we required you to do it and now we feel that this is common practice, so you need to pay for it.
You know, it's amazing, it's amazing that California just continues to pass an astronomical number of laws every single year. It's, you got to, you got to be able to pay for a lot of this stuff. Supervisor Hammison?
Yeah, these, I mean, I, I noticed there was, well, there's certainly a lot of stuff in there. But, I mean, there's some voter, voter identification, registration procedures that we're going to continue to enforce or it's going to cost us, that we're not going to get reimbursed, reimbursed for.
Any of the list of mandates through 60 that we have been eligible for, if we continue to do those, provide those services, they won't be reimbursable. So we're either going to have to find other avenues. The state of California is just not going to automatically reimburse them.
So are we going to discontinue these services? Or what's, are you going to come back to us with some sort of a report on, these are the things that, that we could not provide? These are the things that we should provide? These are the things that we can't afford to provide?
It, it puts these local jurisdictions in a very delicate position because we provided these services. And many of these are, you know, have become commonplace. I can do that. I would suspect we would probably see that most of these services are expected and are something that we should provide. I guess the kicker is that they were forced upon us in the beginning and now they are taking, you know, withholding the funding. Much like the Brown Act, that you, you know, what we saw last year, they, they suspended that. And then they suspended the law. Well, then they brought the law back in and said, well, it's common practice now. So this will be the law. You know, the, the situation is that I suspect that we are going to continue to provide most of these services because there is a responsibility to do so. I can pull some of the departments and see what that impact will be. And if there are any of them that they feel they might be able to drop. But it would quite possibly be a disservice to our, our residents, too.
Well, I, I mean, I, it's hard to tell what each one of these things, just from the, just from what's here, what they entail or what.
That's correct.
What level.
Not every one of, yeah, not every one of these are being provided by Del Norte County. But many of them are. And they're, the amounts on each one of those mandates is going to vary. You know, they may be very little to, like the open meeting law, which is quite a bit.
All right.
If you'd like, if the board, so, you know, sees fit, I, at the next department head meeting, we will bring this up and have people take a look at each one of their budgets and see how this will affect them.
So there's no action needed today, Jay?
No, this is informational only.
Okay. Well, I think the consensus for the board, unless somebody disagrees, is that you should take it at the department head meeting and come out and see what the impact's going to be.
Well, I know we did pass a resolution to honor the Brown Act, which was rescinded because some of these pieces that the legislature did pick and choose were what the public expects is what they said, well, we're not going to reimburse you on them. And that's, that's the kind of push called a reexperiencing.
That's, that's correct. And some of these, you know, are, are services that, being provided by these departments, they needed to be funded at the time. The state funded those. And then they, you know, by pulling that funding, they put them in a difficult position. Because some of these are very, very good services. And they're needed services.
All right. Okay, at this point, we are going to adjourn the meeting.